Good afternoon, everyone. I am now calling this meeting to order of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Ms. Ramirez, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am. All trustees are present except for the mayor. We have a quorum.
We will move now to Ms. Brandy Russell with our safety message, invocation, and pledge of allegiance.
Good afternoon, everyone. I review the evacuation procedures so that we are prepared and as safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the PA system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door to exit outside and verbally alert others. We'll move to the parking lot in front of the building or the AT&amp;T parking lot at the McCullum Brooklyn Bridges. Our security team will be watching and will notify their appropriate emergency services. Lastly, we will also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to assure we are prepared. Additionally, we ask that you remain seated during the duration of the meeting, keep the aisles clear, and do not block exits. Now, will you please stand with me for an invocation? We thank you for the many blessings we have freely given -- I'm sorry. We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to us each of us. We ask you for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, to provide them with knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, and welcome to the Board Relations Team. I'd also like to welcome our new mayor, Gina Ortiz-Jones. Welcome. And our city manager, Eric Walsh, is here today. Welcome. All right. We will move to public comment with Ms. Heather Gomez. Obviously, we have a lot of people. I will not be able to give anybody extra seconds even. I don't mean to be rude, but you will have just the two minutes. Thank you.
Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they will speak about. For this meeting, we have over 20 in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. At the conclusion of the two minutes, the screen will flash red. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? The first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange, followed by Don Benitez.
Thank you and good evening. I mean, good afternoon. I know it's got to go fast. My name is Henrietta "Queta" Flores LaGrange, and it's a pleasure for me to be here today. And I know why I'm here for is to speak. And let me tell you that my dreams have come true. Rudy Garza as our CEO, then Janie Gonzalez also as the chairperson of CPS. I was blown away, Janie, when I saw you as a chairman here. And then, look at my bag, the pride that I have that's given to me by being here. Gina, I'm proud of you for being the first woman I think I can identify with. And let me tell you, the agencies I represent is the Mulberry Street Girl Gang, Lulac, Raz Unida, and Growing Up Brown. I know I went to pay my bill the other day, and the person I have to thank is Omar and Esther because they let me walk in with my Felipe. And it was a hot day, and I needed to get in and out. Omar, thank you for giving me the courtesy. And I know you have a big group back there, and I think all can be worked out if you listen because I was the chairman of the Civil Service Commission for the City of San Antonio, so I know. And I know how to deal, and I know how to work, and I know you all can do it. And as I'm here, I'm requesting a private meeting with each and every one of you, and I'm making it. I'm not writing it down because that was my first choice, but I want everybody to know that I am asking for a private meeting with you, and I aim to get it because if not, I have to go private, that you are not going to help the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaGrange. Our next speaker is Don Benitez, to whom Evelyn Michaelich revert a lot, and are both ceding their time, so she has a total of six minutes.
Thank you for your time. I'm speaking to item number six. My name is Patty Benitez. I'm a native San Antonioan. I graduated from Thomas Jefferson High School, attended SAC, UTSA, and Our Lady of the Lake. I have a BBA, an MBA, and a PhD. I am also a 2014 retiree from CPS Energy. I had 32 years, eight months, and 23 days of service. I know my length of service because it factored into the amount of insurance premiums I would pay to CPS Energy. I pay 12.75% more than active employees for my insurance. I know many employees who worked the full 35 years to be able to pay only what active employees pay for insurance. These calculations are based on the benefit plan, which had been in effect since 1983 until this past January, when CPS Energy brought a change to the plan with zero input from retirees who are affected by this change. Not even one retiree under the plan provided input to the new plan. One of my concerns is how many more changes will be arbitrarily made to the benefits plan without considering the effects to the recipients? Another concern is, will CPS Energy continue to fund some of the costs through the trust, or will the money we put into the plan all these years go to fund current employees? Retirees have learned zero from CPS Energy on the impact to the trust, which CPS and we diligently provided funds to for many, many years. I have paid for 40 years. I am on a few boards and realize occasionally difficult decisions have to be made. However, we, as board members, ask questions to determine the impact of the decision and will try to minimize any negative impact. I do not feel that level of consideration was given when making this decision. What other options were explored? CPS Energy has stated there is no option for retirees to have a choice to keep the current plan. My question is, why not? Also, there was zero communicated to retirees about the impacts to spouse or dependents. These basic questions were not even answered for affected participants before the January 2025 decision was made to not allow retirees a choice to maintain current group health coverage. Also, what oversight is there to keep AMWINS from significantly increasing the cost? CPS retirees have never been required to maintain CPS insurance. If retirees wanted to purchase insurance such as Medicare supplements on the market, retirees have always had that choice. Now, it is no longer a choice but a requirement for all to get a supplement. According to what Lisa Lewis said, this change is being made because CPS received complaints about the cost of premiums. The complaints were most likely from retirees with significantly less than 35 years of service. Our plan was designed for long-term employees who participated in the plan for their whole career. I do believe CPS received some complaints, but I do not believe this complaint is pervasive to all retirees. This is the main reason I supported the petition, to let CPS management and the board know that those complaints were just from a small subset of retirees, since CPS did not solicit information from a broader sample of the retiree population. Before I turned 65, I was fortunate enough to attend a pre-Medicare information session. Unless you have a good grasp of the ramifications of the supplement decisions, you will have regrets for you and your family for the rest of your lives. I just turned 70 this month, and fortunately, I am still in good health and can make informed decisions. However, there are many in the retiree population who are very elderly or are not in good health and will have no one to advocate for them. This sudden change with limited information is not impacting current employees who are younger, but the impact is significant to the elderly and to those who are the most vulnerable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Next, we will have Freddie Jean Satcher, followed by Deborah Hinrich. And yes, there's no seated time there.
Hello. I am Deborah Hinrich. I'm a CPS retiree. For 10 years, the health plan was under my domain, and we were provided certificates when we retired that said basically this. I'm actually quoting from the certificate, and that certificate was signed by our CEO and general manager at the time. This is to certify that a group health comprehensive major medical plan, the PLAN, exists for the employees of CPS Energy and the retired CPS Energy employee and his or her dependents who continue to be eligible under the terms of the PLAN. They are covered by the City Public Service Group Health Plan and will continue to receive benefits provided by the PLAN. This coverage is subject to all plan provisions enforced at the date of retirement. For the majority of us, when we retired, we had 35 years of service and were age 55. Many of us stayed to earn this benefit. Retirees should be grandfathered and given a choice to either stay on the plan that was promised to us or to select the new plan, which will definitely benefit those retirees who do not have the 35 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next feature will be Deborah Hinrich, followed by Patricia Major, who will have eight minutes of seated time.
Glad to see you all again. My name is Patricia Major. I've been a 60-plus-year resident of CPS Quadrant 1 and a customer. In 2002, I retired from CPS's Energy's Financial Services and Accounting as an executive. For 42-plus years, I have paid premiums into the CPS Group Health Plan, and I am unfortunately an unenthusiastic participant in Medicare Parts A and B for eight-plus years. Medicare is not what people think it is. First, congratulations to Gina Ortiz-Jones on becoming our new mayor, and also congratulations to Janie Martinez Gonzalez for her selection as a UTSA outstanding alumni. I want to thank you for letting me speak today about Agenda Item 6B. I and others believe that the draft minutes for May 19, 2025 vary from the meeting video recording, and here are two examples. Minutes covering the public comments section do not summarize my remarks about the handling of the Board Committee reports, especially those for the EBOC, which is the Employee Benefits Oversight Committee. As I previously stated, at that time, the Board Chair usually accepts these committee reports without discussion, questions, motions, or votes by the trustees. Does this practice comply with Texas Open Meetings and Open Record statutes? Also, as regards the May 19, 2025 minutes covering Section 8, which was the Board Committee reports themselves, at that meeting, trustee Gonzalez asked or requested that the meeting minutes for EBOC for January 13, '25 be provided to her because she did not recall receiving those items, and that request by trustee Gonzalez was omitted from the official minutes of the meeting. Shouldn't these minutes be detailed? Additional comments today that I offer for myself and other retirees about the Employee Benefits Oversight Committee and the new fully insured Medicare-coordinated insurance plans are as follows. Since February 2025, I personally have spoken to several hundred CPS Group Health Plan participants who are on Medicare, including as many as over 50 in the past two weeks. Most of them retired with over 35 years of service. A substantial number of these people worked in the field jobs such as Lyman's, and they were either in electrical or gas operations and the power plants. Most of them have serious medical conditions. These medical conditions may relate to their CPS jobs for 35-plus years, and that's why they appreciated the CPS Group Health Plan. Examples of these illnesses include hearing loss, which requires hearing aids, blindness, visual limitations, heart conditions, Parkinson's disease, and various forms of cancers. These retirees feel that the information provided through the month of June by CPS and AMWINS is too vague, and there are almost no details to date. What is more telling to us is the information that has not been provided. Was this by design? AMWINS spokesperson during the teleconference on June 24 merely read the material mailed to us, and he offered several inaccurate remarks about the current CPS Group Health Plan. He was quick to point out the disclaimer language on the documents and that retirees would be invoiced for monthly premiums that would be no more payroll deductions. Both of these came across as offensive to us. He stated that greater details would not be available until the fall open enrollment period. He didn't seem to understand the audience enough to know that many preferred their current medications, hearing aid coverage, as opposed to having new concierge services and free gym memberships. Hundreds of these affected employees, including some not on Medicare until next year, are fearful and skeptical about CPS's handling of this matter. Some speculate that it was intended as an October surprise. We do not want to be argumentative and adversarial with the trustees, the Employee Benefits Oversight Committee, or the CEO. We do want to have more discussion and interaction before this major life change occurs. So what do retirees want? What we ask today, again, is for the Board of Trustees to get more detail from executive management about your fiduciary responsibilities with respect to the Employee Health Plan Benefit Trust and the covered participants, and to understand what the plan is before changes occur. We also think you should ask, how much are we going to spend on AMWINS and Lockton for their services? What information did the EBOC trustees receive before their vote on January 13, and who voted for this? Which of the EBOC committee members? As far as the EBOC is concerned, we ask that you get input from over 2,000 inactive or retired employees. Meet with retirees as soon as possible to alleviate their fears. We believe that -- many employees believe that they have valid contracts, as Deb Hinrich pointed out, because of these certificates. An important feature is, we would like to be grandfathered, if we are Medicare-eligible employees, to keep the CPS Group Health Plan Option A or B, as we currently have, and to remain part of the risk pool of participants and the premium calculation as it exists. You can permit retirees who want to change to the new fully insured plans to do so if they choose. Dozens of retirees want the Board and especially trustees on the EBOC Committee, especially Dr. Romero, who just joined that committee in February, and the CEO, to know the following question. Did executive management present detailed justification, relevant facts, and the legal context before they voted? How was the present $300 million trust fund and its future discussed? Did the trustees on the EBOC Committee merely accept management's recommendations? And did they tell you how many people were affected by this? The other thing is CPS's executive management has broadly stated that many retirees have asked for solutions to high premiums and out-of-pocket costs, and that this change that we're getting is modernization of benefits. Many retirees believe that the design by the EBOC Committee is kicking off 300 retired Medicare-eligible participants and their spouses off the plan, and this could be summarized as capricious and arbitrary, but definitely not modernization. This major change to our healthcare shows CPS executive management's disregard for retirees, especially those in power plant construction operations work, many of whom have serious Dozens of retirees have legal concerns about their certificates or their voluntary early retirement program initiatives. We have many retirees that have signed a petition that we will be presenting to you probably in the next month, asking that we be given choice. I appreciate your consideration, and again, we are not trying to be adversarial. We would just like for this to be more of a two-way communication process. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you. Before moving forward, were all retirees given an opportunity to speak? We did get the list a little -- okay, fantastic. So, moving on, we have Paula Carey, followed by Isabella Bersenyo.
Good afternoon. My name is Paula Carey. I represent District 2, and I'm here to advocate for our neighbors. Southwest Workers Union let me know that the wealthy and the corporations have discounts, whereas our neighborhood, I used to run a little free pantry and a community fridge, struggled to put food on the table. We had to close. We could not keep up with demand. Trust me. That said, I know city council has approved rate increases time and time again. The neighbors that I'm surrounded by have a hard time keeping the lights on, let alone food on the table, and more and more families consolidating into small homes filled with elderly and children, many with severe medical needs and disabilities of every kind you can imagine. So I'm here to advocate that we allow discounts for those on fixed incomes, for those who have medical equipment that need electricity and refrigerated medications. I am here to advocate for my public, my neighborhood, and for the city. I also would like to make sure that there is a cap on increases for those who are most vulnerable and zero shut-offs in the increasingly extreme weather conditions in our city. The housing in my neighborhood cannot keep up with the heat. It's not insulated well enough. It's not ventilated well enough. So, thank you for your time and consideration. I'm here to advocate for my people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. We now have Isabella Bersenyo, followed by Ana Trevenyo.
Good afternoon. That was way louder than I thought. Sorry. Good afternoon, Board of Mayor. I'm Isabella Bersenyo, and I live and teach in Quadrant 3. So this is my yearly time that I can actually come and voice my opinion at a board meeting. Normally, I am at work. I've come to speak on an issue of life and death, disconnections, especially but not only in the face of extreme heat. I think it's important to ground ourselves in something we may not often think about, although maybe some of us in the room are all too aware of this. Many of us are not. We are beyond privileged to be in the AC, even right now in this fancy building, here or at home, and to not worry about if our lights will get shut off. As a teacher, there's one time this past year alone that I can remember calling to check in on a student who just stopped coming to school. Mom said it's because their power got cut off. Can't even get ready for school. How are you supposed to move on with your life when you don't have electricity? That's a kid. Are they supposed to pay the bill? What do you want from them? Sorry. That's very upsetting to me. These are families. Disconnections make a life unlivable, a home uninhabitable, increased risk of eviction or death, increased interactions with law enforcement, something much of our community just can't deal with currently. And it's past time CPS Energy stopped making us live in fear of losing what has been made a necessary commodity for life, energy. It's not optional. I've been a member of Climate Justice San Antonio for about five years now and want to uplift the group's demands, to prioritize real people and families over data centers and businesses, and to end disconnections for the most vulnerable. In reviewing rate structures and disconnections policies, I would personally push our new mayor and the entire board to consider their own privileges, CPS's inevitable annual windfall, or Rudy Garza's absurd salary, before throwing people on payment plans or turning off their lights, regardless of their risk level. People should not go without basic quality of life markers such as shelter or electricity while others live in excess. I hope this board will do something meaningful for San Antonians. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. We now have Ana Trevenyo, followed by Luisana Santa Bañez.
Hello. My name is Ana Trevenyo, and I work with Texas Rising, who is a coalition member of Climate Justice San Antonio, also known as CGASA. CPS Energy, we are here as a coalition to go ahead and urge that y'all reform your policies to better support our most vulnerable community members who depend on you. Here are CPS Energy rape pairs who have signed our petition and they're calling on you to do exactly that. I'm sure you all got a whole bunch of more emails earlier in the day from people who signed our petition, but here are some physical copies. We are calling for a permanent no-disconnection policy for households with low income, people who have high debt burdens, those who are currently facing unemployment, and individuals who rely on electricity for, you know, medical equipment and other treatments. In today's world, access to energy is not a luxury but a necessity. We rely on it to refrigerate food, medicine, to access public education, to work, and to survive in intensifying heat. Cutting off power to struggling households only deepens economic inequality, and it puts people's lives at risks, especially with the face of a growing climate crisis. Disconnections are a serious public health threat that CPS Energy needs to address. Dr. Romero and the new mayor, you need to agendize this policy immediately because CPS Energy rape pairs cannot afford to wait, and utility disconnections are, at the end of the day, inhumane. And I'm going to give these to you all so that way you can have a --
Thank you for your input. Now, we have Luisana Santa Bañez, followed by Adrienne Shelley.
Good afternoon. I'm here representing the Coalition for Dignified Housing, which focuses on addressing housing insecurity in the historic Westside community. We're joined by Esperanza, Historic Westside, and Domesticas Unidas, and we're part of the Climate Justice San Antonio Alliance. To get an idea of our neighborhood, over 65% of homes in this historic district were built before 1960, and about 41% were built in the 1920s and 1930s, some earlier than that. This is a community who has been both aggressively targeted by code compliance for home condemnation and demolition, but also by gentrification and unaffordable housing development. People are being priced out on all sides. I asked a resident of ours, who's an active board member of the Historic Westside Residents' Association. She really wanted to be here, but she asked me to read her statement on her behalf. CPS should stop utility disconnections in times of extreme weather like extreme heat because families in my community live in older homes that need a lot of work to be able to conserve energy. Our community has different dynamics to their living conditions. Some are on fixed income, some live check-to-check, some rely on one income for a multiple-family household like hers. I personally take medication that can cause me to get dehydrated. I keep medication in the fridge, and I live in an older home that, when it's hot outside, it's really hot in my home, and when it's cold outside, it's really cold inside my home. As you can see, our community cannot afford the rising cost of basic human needs and protections like rent and taxes for housing, food, and utilities. We ask you to please prioritize people who are most affected by climate vulnerability and high energy burdens. We anticipate higher heat indexes by over 130 degrees sometimes that our communities feel. These are deadly, life-threatening environments, and utility disconnections place people in severe danger, and no one should be left to survive under those circumstances, not even when CPS can prevent it. Payment plans are not enough. Charities cannot keep up with the growing need, and we deserve solutions that address our inequities in our neighborhood. At minimum, we deserve some real grace for families at risk of imminent disconnections. Please put people over profit.
Thank you. And then we had a report, too, that we also want to share with you. Mr. Shelley is ceding his time to Didi Belmaras, so please cue for four minutes for Didi Belmaras. for Didi Belmaras.
Good afternoon, Board. Mayor, my name is Didi Belmaras. I'm a clean energy advocate with Public Citizen. Mayor Ortiz Jones, welcome to your first CPS Energy Board of Trustees meeting. My comments today are addressed entirely to you. I'm here with community members from different organizations, everyday working-class citizens, and the Coalition Climate Justice San Antonio, who have been attending board meetings every month since March 31st, calling on CPS Energy to do three things. End disconnections for the most vulnerable and at-risk residents. There are over 180,000 customers who are struggling to pay their bills, but a disconnection of power doesn't just affect one customer, it affects everybody who lives in that one household. We have repeatedly called on transparency within CPS Energy Citizen Input Committee. This is a committee that City Council and the board members appoint. While the CIC meetings are open to the public, their secret subcommittees are not. The subcommittees are Customer Relations and Communications, Rates, Finance and Business, and lastly, Power and Technology. All of these issues impact customers and as such, should be open to the public. The public deserves to hear firsthand what is being discussed in these secret subcommittee meetings and not just given a recap, as you all will get from the board management today. Finally, we have called on CPS Energy to conduct a robust and public process on how they charge customers. In fact, community members have been calling on CPS Energy leadership to do this for years. This has yet to happen, even as a third rate increase will be considered in 2026. After the board meeting in March, Climate Justice San Antonio followed up with an email with a statement on our public utilities to the trustees on April 9th. I have a copy for you, Mayor. We never received a response to that. Every month since then, residents, like the ones that are here, come here to share their stories of disconnections, late payments, and the suffering that goes along with that. Mayor, the board has yet to acknowledge these efforts. The CEO has yet to acknowledge it either. Friday afternoon, all of y'all should have received roughly 712 petition signatures from concerned citizens that also want the board to take action on or ask. On June 16th, the board held a meeting on AI and the utility perspective. CPS Energy, like every other utility in the country, is grappling with the demand from data centers. Data centers use a tremendous amount of water and a tremendous amount of power. There was an entire meeting dedicated to managing data centers and other large load customers. I think they even have their own website. As previously reported in Express News, a local coalition dubbed the Energy Forward Alliance formed and has met with CPS Energy executives multiple times to ask about the city-owned utilities' plans for building infrastructure and expanding capacity for data center projects coming in the next five, 10 years. It also wants to say how the costs for doing so should be distributed among commercial and residential customers. CPS Energy shouldn't socialize the cost for data center expansion or any other large industrial build-out. And if CPS Energy is having closed-door meetings with this alliance, they should be having meetings with concerned residential rate payers as well. Once again, we're here, concerned and impacted rate payers who want to stop disconnections. Still, we have yet to receive any acknowledgement. It's disheartening when these working-class folks take time out of their day, month after month, to give their own testimony to the board, and they've been ignored. But for full transparency, I have reached out to Dr. Rometto, and she did take my call, as she always does. Mayor Ortiz Jones, good things happen when CPS Energy authentically receives input from community members. They've done it in the past. There was a time when public comments at board meetings wasn't a thing, but they listened to the community members, asked for it, and started to include it. The Climate Justice Community worked with former Mayor Ron Nierenberg back in 2019 for a committee that could give input to utility leadership on a variety of issues.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Somebody cede their time to me. If you didn't sign up. Can you give me your time? Yeah, Deborah, Deborah, can you cede your time to me? All right. I just need a little bit more.
Please state a name for...
Didi Belmaras.
No, I mean who you got the time from.
Oh, Deborah Ponte or? Angel, Angel Rivera. The Climate Justice Community worked with former Mayor Ron Nierenberg back in 2019 for a committee that could give input to utility leadership on a variety of issues. He helped to get the rate advisory committee off the ground. I was a member of the RAC, and in our two years, we gave input on the Sustainable Tomorrow Energy Plan, two rate increases, and contributed to the latest generation plan that will finally bring an end to the polluting Spruce Coal Plant. Mayor Jones, it is our hope that you will use your position on this board to not only uplift the concerns of your community members, but to ensure they are meaningfully addressed and to bring much-needed transparency and accountability to our public utility. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. We next have Isabel Galván followed by Anissa Mancías.
Good morning. My name is Isabel Galván. I'm a District One San Antonio resident, a disabled mother, and a community organizer working directly with families impacted by unaffordable utilities and housing instability. I'm here to say and confirm what our communities have been saying for years. Disconnecting utilities is inhumane, especially in extreme weather. In a city where the summer heat regularly reaches 100 degrees and our winters have already proven deadly, taking away someone's electricity isn't just unjust, it's dangerous. Your role is to serve and protect the public good, not to mimic the behavior of corporate greed. And yet, families in San Antonio are scraping by making $8 to $15 an hour and are being hit with bills that do not favor their income, all while also trying to pay rent, buy food, cover medications, childcare, and pay for gas or transit just to get to work. These are not luxuries. These are basic needs, and your policies are forcing people to choose between survival and basic dignity. Today, we are demanding an end to utility disconnections, especially during periods of extreme weather like Texas summers or our chaotic winters. No one should ever be cut off from a basic human necessity like power. CPS must put in place policies and programs to work with people regardless of their balance. That means creating flexible income-based payment plans and meeting people where they are. Poverty should not be punished with indignity. These decisions you make don't just reflect policy, they reveal your character. They show us who you are, not only as a governing body, but as individuals with the power to uplift or degrade. The soul of a city is measured by how it treats its most vulnerable. That measure is being taken right now. So the question is, which side of San Antonio's history will you take part of? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Anissa Mancías followed by Araceli Herrera, which will require Spanish translation.
Hi, my name is Anissa Mancías and I live in District Eight in San Antonio. I'm here today because I'm frustrated and heartbroken over how many families, people I know, neighbors, community members are being treated by CPS Energy. Since March, people have shown up to every single board meeting to share their stories, telling you how hard it is to decide between groceries or keeping the lights on. We even sent a letter to the board back in April and still no response. Meanwhile, CPS Energy has held special meetings and created websites to support data centers. I've read about how these big companies are getting meetings and tension and infrastructure plans, but where is that same urgency and care for the 123,000 people and households who are behind on their bills and at risk of losing their electricity? Putting people on payment plans that they can't afford doesn't help. It only buries them in more debt. Disconnections don't just inconvenience people, they hurt them. They endanger our kids, elders, people with health conditions who rely on electricity. I hope you listen to what the people have been saying for months. We've tried dialogue, but now we need action. CPS Energy has the power to pause disconnections and prioritize people, not profits. We deserve transparency and we deserve to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. We now have Araceli Herrera followed by Evangelina Villanueva, both of whom will get four minutes due to Spanish translation.
Buenas tardes. Este quiero saludar especialmente a la señora Gina. Muchas gracias porque ahora una mujer nos va a representar también y nos va a escuchar con mejor atención.
The new lady, a mayor, who we know is going to listen to us women with a careful attitude.
Porque nunca habíamos tenido esa oportunidad y este, y gracias, gracias.
Because we have never had that opportunity and we thank you for it.
Bueno, yo quiero decir que es tan importante no cobrar tan cara la luz y que la gente tenga esa luz y esa agua.
Want to speak about how important it is to have fair pricing for the electricity for our people in the city?
Porque yo pienso en casi por lo regular, en estos meses de calor, hay algo que nunca se ha tomado en cuenta y que no se habla aquí, pero como mujer lo digo, es la violencia doméstica.
One thing that is affected by the high heat of the summer months that we have with such high heat is the effect it has on domestic violence. It's never spoken of, but we, as women, know that it's true.
Es la violencia doméstica crece con el calor. Si uno no tiene luz, si uno está viviendo en necesidad, porque la pareja quizás no gana mucho dinero, no entra mucho dinero a la vivienda, y eso hace que crezca terriblemente la violencia doméstica.
Domestic violence grows as our difficulties grow, when we have problems keeping energy in our homes and discomfort that comes through losing our energy, it intensifies the violence in the home.
Y no solo de la pareja, de un matrimonio, sino también de los hijos o de otros familiares que viven juntos. Esto hace que afecte mentalmente la salud de toda esa familia que no tiene luz.
This affects the entire family and their mental health because it affects the children and any other family member that happens to live in the same home.
Yo quiero recalcar que estamos viviendo de verdad ahora momentos muy difíciles en la economía. Aún arrastramos todo lo que pasó durante la pandemia, aún arrastramos que no podemos ponernos al corriente de pagos de casa, de renta, de luz, de agua, de comida, de ropa, porque fuimos terriblemente afectados por la pandemia.
We are still trying to recover and have not been able to recover because of the difficulties and the suffering of the pandemic, and which put us so far behind in our economic responsibilities.
Yo en el grupo de Domesticas Unidas durante la pandemia, yo nunca me quedé en la casa. Yo siempre estuve atendiendo en mi localito a la comunidad para ayudarlos con la renta, la luz, el agua, y el pago de casa. Entonces, yo ahí vi la realidad de la comunidad. Creo que yo nunca había visto qué tan dura era la pobreza en San Antonio, y eso que yo la he vivido terriblemente.
During the pandemic, I continued to work with my domestic workers' union, trying to help everyone who was in trouble with their needs or their problems that were arising from the lack of jobs and money, income, et cetera. I really learned how terrible poverty is in San Antonio, even though I had experienced some of it myself before.
Qué miserables son los salarios que ganamos los trabajadores, no solo las trabajadoras del hogar, aunque somos trabajadoras excluidas, pero otro tipo de trabajadores también ganan muy poco salario, y por esa razón no alcanza para pagar todos los cosas, sobre todo cuando hay niños, hay comida, ropa, muchas cosas. Y por esta razón, yo suplico que no suban la luz, que no lo vuelvan a subir la luz, que hagan algo. Yo creo que ganan tanto dinero, yo lo veo con mi bil, solo somos dos personas y pagamos casi $200 por la luz y tenemos todo apagado.
We have a very high electricity bill, up to $200 a month, and it's just two of us. I see the suffering. We are all having trouble, and we are asking you here at this time not to raise the quota for electric services, because it is impossible for us to keep up with everything with the poor salaries that many of us have, not just domestic workers like myself, but there are many jobs that people learn too little to keep up with all their needed expenses.
De verdad ganamos salarios de miseria, salarios de hambre. Por esa razón, toda la mayoría de la población que gira alrededor de Domesticas Unidas constantemente me están llamando por teléfono, "Araceli, ayúdame, no tengo trabajo." La mayoría que me llama no tienen trabajo y entonces no tienen para pagar la luz, el agua, y lo necesario.
I'm constantly getting calls from people, domestic workers and others, who find themselves without any work, without any income, and it's impossible for them to pay their bills. And they're calling me all the time and asking for me to help them. And I'm trying to express these needs to the board now.
Y yo digo, ¿dónde están los trabajadores de la ciudad? ¿Por qué no les llaman a ellos? ¿Por qué no les piden a ellos ayuda? ¿Por qué me llaman a mí? ¿Por qué me piden ayuda a mí cuando yo no puedo hacer nada? Por fortuna ahora, como estoy con esta coalición de una vivienda digna, mi compañera, Janet, ella es la que está llenando las aplicaciones, pero tristemente solo dan 30 minutos para poderle llenar la aplicación a tanta cantidad de gente que llega con nosotros a pedir ayuda, sobre todo para la luz.
I often ask myself, why do they call me to help them? Why don't they call CPS to get help from CPS and their workers for these problems? I'm very happily working with people, helping them fill out applications for services and help, but they only give us 30 minutes to fill out all the formulas, and it's very difficult to help these people with the limitations that are placed on us.
Y yo pues siento que tengo una carga en mi espalda por toda esta necesidad. Quizás les parezca chistoso, pero créanmelo que no. Me voy a la casa preocupada porque digo, no se pudo llenar la aplicación de toda esa gente que quería ayuda. O cuando van y ya están muy endeudados con la luz, no son flojos. Es que la luz es carísima. Todo es carísimo.
She says she goes home after working her day and trying to fill as many applications as she can, and she has to deny some people the application because they didn't have time to do all of them, and she feels very badly about that. And she says, it's not that we're lazy, it's that we just don't, we need help to get this, to be able to do this.
Es que la luz está carísima, la comida está carísima, todo, la renta está carísima, todo está carísimo. Nuestros salarios nunca han subido desde que yo trabajo. Tengo 35 años viviendo en San Antonio y es $7.50 la hora. No ha subido el salario.
Salaries have not increased. Food is expensive. Energy is expensive. Rent is expensive. Everything goes up except our salaries. I've been working at this job for 35 years and my salary is still the same.
Estoy hablando de otros salarios. Yo como trabajadora del hogar ganó muy poquito dinero, pero yo estoy hablando de otras compañeras que trabajan, por ejemplo, en los hoteles o de meseras en los restaurantes. No hemos recibido un incremento en nuestro salario. Necesitamos también un incremento en nuestro salario, pero todos, todos necesitamos... Necesitamos también un incremento en nuestro salario, pero todos, todos necesitamos ganar más dinero, pero también ganamos más dinero y suben todo enseguida y no logramos ponernos al corriente.
Nunca podemos mantenernos en contacto debido a los salarios, nuestros salarios simplemente no aumentan. Y estoy hablando no solo de mi trabajo, que soy trabajadora doméstica, sino de personas que trabajan en hoteles y restaurantes, sus salarios no aumentan, ganan muy poco dinero y simplemente no podemos mantenernos en contacto con el ritmo de la vida.
Y por eso yo siempre cuando vengo a hablar al Consilio, a donde sea, todos los lugares que voy a hablar, yo siempre les digo, por favor, suban el salario, aumenten el salario, ¿cuándo van a aumentar el salario? Nunca nos han aumentado el salario, necesitamos un buen salario y también necesitamos que no suban la luz, el agua y también no queremos que traigan cosas que no nos van a servir a la gente pobre trabajadora.
Te pedimos que no subas los precios, te pedimos que, por favor, ¿cuándo vas a subir el salario mínimo? ¿Cuándo vas a ayudarnos a mantenernos en contacto con nuestras necesidades?
Por ejemplo, ahorita estamos, estamos, no queremos esa silver line porque va a afectar a la comunidad pobre, a la comunidad trabajadora, van a quitar casas, les van a aumentar los impuestos, no es algo que nos va a beneficiar, hagan bien el estudio antes de hacerlo.
Obviamente, no va a ayudarnos, va a sacar a las casas de la gente, van a hacer un estudio profundo sobre los efectos de tu decisión antes de hacerlo.
Y por último, nosotros, la gente pobre, la gente trabajadora, la gente de la comunidad con salarios de miseria, no queremos ese estadio de los sports, los billonarios, tanto los jugadores como los dueños, los que se benefician con eso, no queremos ese estadio, no queremos que lo paguen con nuestros impuestos, que no hagan bonos para poderles ayudar a ellos y nosotros cada vez más pobres, con más estrés, más enfermedades, más tristes y más desesperados.
Va a ser difícil mantenernos en contacto. Dice que las personas pobres necesitan que ustedes tomen decisiones que les ayuden porque son las más necesarias. Las personas pobres no están interesadas en nuevos estadios, no para los Spurs ni los demás que se consideran.
Perdón, por favor, termina ese comentario porque tu tiempo se acaba.
Está bien. Lo siento, fue genial, pero tengo un gran momento de recordar todo lo que dijo, pero dijo que deberías orientar tus prioridades cuando tomas decisiones sobre cómo vas a gastar el dinero de la ciudad, su dinero de impuestos.
Gracias.
Gracias a todos. Gracias a todos.
Siguiente, tenemos a Evangelina Villanueva, seguida por Graciela Sanchez.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Evangelina Villanueva, soy promotora con la Coalición por una vivienda digna. Soy una residente del West Side donde existen muchas familias vulnerables e inmigrantes. En últimas fechas estamos enfrentando un cambio climático severo y hostil, uno que es por el calentamiento del ambiente y el otro por la xenofobia y la política antiinmigrante. Las personas inmigrantes están enfrentando deportaciones y miedo que les impide trabajar. Así también en nuestra comunidad hay un gran número de personas de la tercera edad que ya no pueden trabajar y no tienen los medios para pagar sus facturas al CPS. Les pido, por favor, que sean compasivos y no continúen con las desconexiones, ya que esto implica que haya deshidratación y enfermedades debido al calentamiento extremo. Recuerden, son tiempos difíciles, no más desconexiones, gracias.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Evangelina Villanueva y soy promotora con la Coalición por la Vivienda Digna. Soy residente del West Side donde viven muchas familias que son inmigrantes o vulnerables. En los últimos días, hemos estado enfrentando un cambio climático severo y hostil. Uno debido al calor de la atmósfera y el otro debido a la xenofobia y la política antiinmigrante en esta era. La gente, los inmigrantes, están enfrentando deportaciones y miedo y no pueden trabajar. También... Está bien. Y nuestra comunidad tiene un gran número de personas que tienen edad avanzada, no pueden trabajar más y no tienen los medios para pagar sus cobros del CPS. Te pido que seas compasivo y no continúes con las desconexiones. Esto implica que haya deshidratación y enfermedad debido al calor. Recuerden, son tiempos difíciles, no más desconexiones.
Gracias. Gracias. Ahora tenemos a Graciela Sanchez, seguida por Erika Alvarado.
Buenas tardes, miembro del CPS, presidente, señora Gina, Eric. Mi nombre es Graciela Sanchez y estoy aquí representando al Centro Esperanza de Justicia y Justicia, pero también somos parte de la Coalición de Justicia Climática San Antonio y también soy miembro de la Asociación de Residentes de la Casa del West Side. Estamos buscando un cambio, un cambio que proteja a nuestra población más vulnerable. Vivimos en una ciudad donde un tercio de nuestra población vive en pobreza y has oído de Eva y de Araceli, de Bell, de muchos otros que te han contado las historias de muchas de estas personas. Y somos esas personas, así como trabajamos con ellos en base diaria, así que no estamos inventando historias y a veces siento que hay una desconexión entre gente que se sienta aquí y en la Cámara de Ciudad y en otros lugares que toman decisiones, pero no saben los luchos diarios de nuestra comunidad. Con esta pobreza, CPS todavía ha tenido dos altos niveles de calentamiento desde 2022. Y lo que también sabemos es que todo el mundo está lidiando con el cambio climático que nos da el calor extremo o el clima frío extremo y aquellos que no tienen los medios para insalazar su casa, para mantener su casa confortable, luchan para mantenerse cálidos o fríos. Y los ventiladores de boxeados no ayudan a las casas cuyas temperaturas son más de 110 o 130 grados, que, de nuevo, puedes ver en ese broche que Luisana compartió. Queremos cero desventaja, queremos que escuchen nuestra comunidad. Gina, perdón, te conocí como nombre firsthand. Tuve un debate de justicia climática, de justicia ambiental, nos gustó lo que tuviste a decir, esperamos que tu liderazgo con el board CPS haga los cambios que esta comunidad desesperadamente necesita. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Gracias. Ahora tenemos a Erika Alvarado, seguida por Claudia Sanchez.
Hola, mi nombre es Erika Alvarado y estoy en solidaridad con la Coalición de Justicia Climática San Antonio. También soy una sola madre que vive y trabaja en Distrito 2. Hoy estoy hablando en favor de la transparencia de CPS Energy. Queremos que las reuniones del subcomité CIC sean públicas y queremos que las desconexiones se detengan para las comunidades vulnerables de San Antonio. CPS Energy no hace casi suficiente difusión alrededor del programa de descuento de disponibilidad y no ha utilizado todos los fondos disponibles para ayudar a aquellos en deuda utilitaria, incluido el inevitable windfall que se añade al presupuesto de la ciudad cada año. CPS Energy no está haciendo lo suficiente para cuidar a sus clientes y según su sonido no están tomando cuidado lo suficiente de sus propios retiros que han hablado repetidamente en estas reuniones. Detén las desconexiones, las desconexiones son inhumanas.
Gracias. Ahora tenemos a Claudia Sanchez, seguida por Angelica Olvera.
Buenas tardes, board y señora mayor Ortiz Jones. Mi nombre es Claudia Sanchez, estoy aquí representando a las comunidades de clase trabajadora en San Antonio. He sido activista por unos 20 años, pero tengo un grado de biología y tengo un grado de ciencia política. Soy miembro de LULAC, pero estoy aquí representando a nuestra comunidad de clase trabajadora hoy porque, primero de todos, los momentos en que las reuniones no están siendo llevadas no son accesibles para la gente de clase trabajadora. Están trabajando ahora mismo, no pueden venir y hablar de sus preocupaciones y sus problemas porque están trabajando. Si se detienen de trabajar no recibirán su salario y solo hará que las cosas se vuelvan peores. También para los hablantes de español, mis padres solo hablan español y para ellos es difícil entender las reuniones, lo que está pasando en las reuniones, lo que se dice, es difícil para ellos venir aquí y hablar de sus preocupaciones. Vimos a Araceli, quien trajo a su intérprete, y esos son algunos de los problemas y problemas que nuestra comunidad debe enfrentar día a día. También nuestros inmigrantes ahora mismo, como ya han visto en las noticias, están llevando a cabo disturbios, la gente se está arrestando, las familias están siendo rompidas, las madres van a ser madres solas o padres solos porque están perdiendo a una de sus miembros, así que ahora tienen que pagar sus cobros por sí mismas y eso es otra estrategia en nuestra comunidad. Nuestros salarios, como dijimos, no están aumentando, aunque están trabajando en plena hora, no es suficiente para pagar, los alquileres están aumentando, nuestro alquiler, en mi hogar, está aumentando a $100 cada contrato que hacemos, además de nuestros comestibles, además del gas, además de la insurance, además del tarifa de teléfono, todo se suma y se está volviendo más difícil, como podemos pagar nuestros cobros gracias a Dios, pero sé que muchos de las familias, como dijimos, están trabajando con un salario mínimo, no están aumentando sus aumentos en su salario, así que es más difícil para ellos pagar esos precios si obtenemos esos aumentos en CPS, en el agua y en el alquiler, ¿sabes? También nuestros seniores, muchos de nuestros seniores no pueden estar aquí hoy porque no hay transporte para ellos, no pueden caminar, no pueden moverse más fácilmente. Así que por favor, tomen estas, todas estas cuestiones en consideración antes de tomar decisiones.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Gracias. Ahora tenemos a Jasmine Herrera, seguida por Gabriel Rosales.
Oh, sí, lo siento. Lo siento, en realidad... Lo perdí aquí. Yes, Angelica Olvera primero, lo siento.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Angelica Olvera y estoy aquí pidiéndoles a todos que no hagan los altos niveles de calentamiento. Tenemos a mucha gente anciana que vive en... Su ingreso no es mucho, además, anoche hicimos una encuesta sobre cuánto calor sus casas se vuelven. Vivo en Distrito 4 y algunas de esas casas eran al menos 110 en sus casas. Algunas de ellas tenían aire acondicionado, pero aún así su casa estaba tan caliente. Algunas no tenían aire acondicionado, así que esa es la razón por la que algunas de sus casas eran calientes y debemos entender a algunas de estas personas, algunas de las personas que sé son oxigenadas, tienen que tener su medicación en los refrigeradores, así que es muy importante que no, que no suban los cobros del CPS y algunas de nosotros viven con un presupuesto. Sé que algunos de ustedes, como el CEO que gana mucho dinero, no importa cuán alto son los cobros del CPS, estoy seguro de que esa persona puede pagar 200, 300, 500 dólares por su cobre del CPS, pero muchos de ellos, como dije, viven con un ingreso que es muy incontrolable, tanto que tratamos de comprar cosas que necesitamos y simplemente dejamos de lado las cosas que no son necesarias. Compramos lo que necesitamos y no lo que queremos, así que es muy difícil para nosotros mantenernos en contacto con nuestro cobre de luz, nuestro alquiler, nuestro alquiler de agua. Así que por favor, considérense en no subir sus cobros del CPS, gracias.
Gracias. Ahora tenemos a Jasmine Herrera, seguida por Gabriel Rosales.
Hola, mi nombre es Jasmine Herrera, estoy con la Coalición por la Vivienda Digna. Soy una madre y una sobreviviente de la violencia doméstica. Estoy aquí para ayudar a mis hijos, mi madre que está en dialisis y mi abuelo de 85 y los residentes del West Side. Estoy aquí para pedirles que detengan las desconexiones de nuestra electricidad. Nuestros hijos la necesitan, no merecen este abuso de poder, estar sin luz y estar sin agua. Hace un par de meses que no tenía luz y teníamos que estar en el frío y ahora estoy acercándome a que mi luz se desconecte nuevamente y está caliente fuera. Así que no sé qué va a pasar. No tengo la gran cantidad que ustedes me están pidiendo que pague, solo para que pueda mantener mis luces encendidas. Gracias.
Gracias. Ahora recibimos a Gabriel Rosales, seguida por Miguel Tubeta.
Primero de todo, me gustaría agradecer a nuestro nuevo jefe, estamos muy emocionados y espero, como las otras personas antes en el pasado, que hemos elegido a un jefe para que podamos conseguir algunas de las cosas progresivas que necesitamos hacer y una de ellas es el cobro eléctrico. Tengo padres que tienen 85 años de edad y ellos, incluso ellos mismos, siendo profesores retirados, llegan a esos puntos donde los cobros se vuelven tan altos que tienen... Así que puedo imaginar a todas mis otras personas con las que crecí en el West Side que tienen que venir continuamente aquí y pidiendo al board CPS no hacer los altos niveles o presentar un programa que va a beneficiar. Seguro que somos muy buenos en ayudar a las corporaciones y dar abatimientos fiscales para ayudar a estos individuos a start up con sus empresas. Tenemos que hacer algo para los trabajadores de nuestra comunidad, tenemos que hacer algo. No puedes tomar decisiones y subir un precio y no tener en cuenta que están persiguiendo a nuestra gente y están invasando a nuestras comunidades, están quitando a nuestras familias y no es okay. Así que lo que necesitamos es un board CPS compasivo que no solo se preocupa por sus retiros, estoy en solidaridad contigo, debe haber más transparencia, tenemos que cuidar a tus trabajadores, el proceso de dueño para cada trabajador, pero lo más importante es esa chica joven que acaba de hablar antes de mí, eso es lo que está en juego. Hay vidas de la gente con las que estamos lidiando y, ya sabes, quiero tener confianza de que vas a hacer lo correcto, pero hasta ahora CPS ha ido en una dirección que realmente no ha sido beneficioso en nombre de la comunidad, son los trabajadores que trabajan aquí o son los retiros. Así que hagamos lo correcto, hagamos lo correcto y cuidemos a nuestra gente y a nuestra comunidad porque hemos estado aquí mil años, hemos estado aquí trabajando, trabajando nuestras patas, hice 20 años como waiter, dos dólares por hora, no es suficiente y el ingreso todavía no ha aumentado y estoy orgulloso de Araceli, estoy orgulloso de cada uno de ellos que ha estado aquí y yo estoy en LULAC, como director de la ciudad de Texas, estoy en solidaridad con nuestra gente aquí en la comunidad, gracias.
Gracias. Gracias. Ahora tenemos a Gabriel Tubeta, seguida por Janet Rico.
Buenas tardes, soy Brian López, un residente decadas en San Antonio y un orgulloso
I'm Brian Lopez, a decades-long San Antonio resident and proud member of the working class. I would like to congratulate Mayor Ortiz Jones on her recent victory. I'm told you are a champion of the working class and a friend to labor. I would like for you to prove that. Now, I don't know if you recall, but we have met once before, and you left me thoroughly unimpressed with your stance on Project Marvel and your soft-handed approach to corporate colonization of residential neighborhoods. Fortunately, you, Dr. Romero, and the rest of the CPS Board have the opportunity to immediately and directly improve the lives of nearly 200,000 San Antonio residents by simply preventing the disconnection of utilities to lower-income elderly, people with disabilities, and single-parent households. I further urge you to show your commitment to the people of San Antonio by standing with San Antonio Workers Assembly and the Climate Justice SA Coalition, and force the billion-dollar corporations who are flocking to our beautiful city to pay their fair share for utilities and stop subsidizing them at our expense. I hope you take my words and those of the other advocates here today to heart and push for an actionable change, or as Dr. Romero could tell you, you'll be seeing much more of me. Furthermore, you should all be ashamed of yourselves for failing to take care of your retirees. San Antonio Workers Assembly stands with all those who honorably toil, especially those who should be enjoying their golden years, and also enjoy the view outside.
Thank you.
Chair, that's our final speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, on behalf of the entire Board, thank you all for coming, and please know that we are listening. I will say this again, because every time I say it, it does help somebody. If you need to talk to a staff person today, please see somebody back there behind the desk. If you need to talk about getting on a payment plan, we can help today. I will make my remarks very short, because we have a very long agenda ahead of us. And regarding that, I do want to thank staff, because this is a really detailed and information-rich agenda today. And it's important for the Board, but it's also important for our customers. So there will be several really good presentations today, one of which is on accounts receivable and disconnections, which I and Trustee Gonzalez did ask to have on the agenda because of what we've been hearing from the citizens. Just a couple of real quick things. You know, everything adds up here as we grapple with the climate crisis. And tomorrow, there's something exciting going on with, of all things, a landfill, which we don't normally think of, except to think, we hope they're not near our home. But this is a really important project with the Testman Road landfill that involves converting landfill waste gas into renewable natural gas. This, the renewable natural gas produced at this facility is added to CPS Energy's existing pipeline network for delivery to end users, a portion of which is now powering more than 450 via buses. So, so an important step, an exciting one. Also, just wanted to remind everybody of the Board of Trustees' vacancy. There is an information session next week on July 9, 2025. That one, I believe, starts at 5:00 p.m. We should have a slide on that. But I want to say, same as I said last time, please do not disqualify yourself from considering this position. If you are interested in applying for the Board position, go ahead and do it. Don't say, "Oh, I don't have enough experience," or "I'm not the right person for this." We want to hear from as many people as possible. So the selected candidate will fill the Quadrant 2 seat, currently held by Trustee Steen, whose term ends January 31 of 2026. And the process is that the Board selects a trustee by majority vote, and that nominee must then be considered and confirmed by City Council. And the final deadline for application is August 29. So there's still plenty of time for this. And again, we will have a session here next week, July 9, at 5:30. We will have another session in August, on August 12, at the lunch hour, starting at noon. And then I will turn it over to the CEO for recognition and remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Romero, and welcome, Mayor, to CPS Energy's Board. Today, I'm going to start off recognizing our first-quarter core value award honorees. So as they make their way in, I want to emphasize the importance of our core values, safety and well-being, accountability, transparency, excellence, integrity, and working with a one-team mindset. These serve as guiding principles that shape our culture, drive our decision-making, and enable us to deliver exceptional service to our community. Our core values define who we are as an organization, and they're at the heart of everything that we do. We create this recognition, we created this recognition program to highlight individuals and groups who are outstanding examples of our core values in action and in alignment with our Vision 2027 strategy. We want to celebrate their accomplishments and share these stories with our organization and with you. Last quarter's honorees included one of our gas teams, who were nominated by a customer for safely addressing this customer's concerns. Their diligence touched the customer who wrote, "The people you have in the field and their experience, skills, and perseverance are commendable. It's obvious CPS Energy takes safety seriously." Thank you, team, for your hard work. And this is just one example of many that are represented here today. The individuals we are honoring today consistently model these core values, earning the trust and respect of their colleagues, which is why their peers and colleagues nominate them. This is a self-nominated program. They consistently go above and beyond expectations, delivering outstanding results. As always, please join me in congratulating them for this well-deserved recognition. Vincent? So as Dr. Romero mentioned, today is primarily a day of updates to the Board. As always, you know, we're going to walk through our first-quarter performance as, to see how the year has been shaping up so far. Again, we're going to talk about past due balances in the context of both our first-quarter performance and the accounts receivable process. But I want to recognize Deanna and her team, and all the folks who worked to try to get customers the help they need and their balances up to date. We've gone from $208 million at peak down to $112 million. It's phenomenal progress, because we've put a plan together and we've stuck to that plan. And so Cory and Elena will give us our update on our first-quarter performance. Deanna will provide an update to address the conversation that we've been having through public comment with accounts receivables, our process, and support. We do everything we can possibly do to ensure our customers stay on track. And when they get behind, I believe that we've got more programs in San Antonio than any utility in the country. And we have to operate within certain boundaries that, you know, that exist, both from a legal perspective, you know, and with respect to the entirety of our customer base, all residential customers. So, so we're going to go walk through that conversation today, get the Board's feedback, and, you know, if there are things we can do that the Board feels, you know, are appropriate, then we'll have that conversation today. And then finally, we're going to provide a legislative and regulatory policy update from Kathy Garcia and her team in Austin, that will talk to us about the state legislative session and provide an update at the federal policy level as well. So with that, Chair, I think we're ready to go.
Thank you. All right, we are on Item 6, Consent Agenda, which today consists of Item A, Payment to the City of San Antonio, and Item B, Minutes from the May Regular Board Meeting, there are no procurement items. Just want to ask for a quick clarification. Ms. Ramirez, I, maybe I missed it. I did not see in the minutes where it said when Mr. Steen arrived. I know he came in late, and he was not in the initial votes, but then he was there later. So if we can just add that in? Yes?
I looked at that also, and you did put it after my name.
Yes, ma'am.
In the list at the front. But I, but that would be good if, the way I like to do minutes, if someone comes in to go ahead and, which is what you're suggesting, to go ahead and insert it in the minutes that Mr. Steen arrived at this point. You mind doing that?
Not at all. I will add it into the minutes. I'll go back and look at the recording. He arrived at 2:00 p.m.
Okay. I think it's a very minor change. I think this can stay on Consent Agenda, and floor is open for a motion on Consent Agenda.
Yes, move to approve the.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Consent Agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Chair Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen? Mayor?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Onto our regular agenda, Item 7. We have the Community Input Committee Subcommittee Reports are in our packet. This item is simply for discussion. If there is no discussion or questions on this, we will accept these as written. All right, hearing none. We are moving on to Item 8, our first-quarter performance update with Mr. Kaczynski and Ms. Ball.
All right. Good afternoon, and thank you, Chair. Appreciate that. And as they pull the slide deck up, Rudy alluded to, this first agenda item is a standard item we do every quarter between Elena and I. I will cover the financial performance review for the first quarter. I'll briefly touch on a couple of slides regarding past due accounts, but as Rudy mentioned as well, Deanna Hardwick is here for a broader presentation on all of our programs and outreach efforts. And then, of course, Elena will do her part broadly, looking at the enterprise scorecard. So with that, I'll dive in. As I've mentioned before, you know, the first quarter of the month is early in the year, that are shoulder months. So on this slide, just some quick highlights. It was a little warmer than we had forecasted, so our non-fuel revenue, which is the revenue I typically talk about, because, you know, fuel is a pass-through element. That was a little bit higher than planned, but pretty much on par. Our O&amp;M and capital spend, it's early in the year, they were both slightly lower for a variety of reasons on the O&amp;M cost. We had some timing of projects that just haven't executed in the same manner we anticipated. I would expect that variance to catch up through the course of the year. Capital is notably under plan. That is primarily to the closing of the additional 2% acquisition on STP, having not closed yet. So that makes up a majority of the variance you'll see on capital. I would expect that to close as we go through the course of this year. As Rudy alluded to as well, I have a couple of slides here on past due accounts, and those have continued to decrease since its peak, and we'll show some of those in future slides. So this slide is a little different, and we haven't shared one like this before. We still have our traditional flow-of-funds format in the appendix, and the net income view in the appendix, and the waterfall net income view that we have seen in the past. I thought this might be a little easier as a quick hit, just to summarize for the Board and viewers, on some of the key things we often talk about. You heard me talk about non-fuel revenue. In the blue, you can see the actual results were slightly above the plan, so pretty much on plan for the first quarter. And then, as I mentioned, for operation and maintenance expense, we're a little below plan, mostly based on timing, and you see that reflected there. I show net income, even though it's an accounting number, and that's different than the flow of funds, but our net income is less negative in this instance for the first quarter as a result of additional lift on the revenue side and a reduction of some of the expenses we saw. And then, as always, I always talk about our capital spend from a transmission perspective and then a non-transmission perspective. As far as our transmission spend goes, we're a little bit below plan, but those are large budgets and mostly a function of timing. And then the non-capital, sorry, the non-transmission capital, as I mentioned earlier, the primary variance is about $80 million that's associated with that extra 2% acquisition of STP that hopefully will close at some point over the course of this year. So those are the quick highlights for this first quarter. Again, the first quarter is early. We haven't gone through our primary months of the summer, where you see a lot of movement, and we can get a better handle on generally how the year will perform relative to our forecasts. This slide here on the screen is our typical slide that shows the key financial metrics and the range of acceptability for this year that we had put together when we jumped into this year. So we note that at this point in the year, we still think we're on target to fall within the ranges of all of those metrics. And then I'll pivot briefly on these next two slides, just to hit on some of the numbers. But like I said, Deanna has a presentation following Elena and I that can go into more. But I think you can see depicted here the peaks that we often talk about in October of '22 of $208 million past due. And then, as Rudy alluded to, on the far-right-hand side, you can see that the total past due has gone down to $112 million. One of the things that I think stands out a lot, and I've mentioned it almost every time I report out on this slide, is really the makeup of the amount past due. And how, even though the aggregate balance is lower right now in April 25, you see that the blue component of it, which are folks that are actively engaged, they're current, they're on some payment plan, as a percentage of the total balance, almost 50% of the customer, the balances are on a plan. That isn't, that's an improvement from where we were back in October, where while the number was larger, only 37% of that balance was on a payment plan. So what that means is, from the lens of talking to our credit rating agencies, they see that as an improvement to the risk profile of the amount that is past due, the more folks that you can keep current. And again, kudos to Deanna's team for all the work they've been doing for the last couple of years. And then the other thing to note is just, you know, as a percentage of cust, of balances that are at risk for disconnection, that gray bar on the far right, that's only 21% of the entire balance. Again, I look at that from a view of risk. 21% of our past due balances are at risk of disconnection as compared to about 41% back at our peak. So Deanna's team is doing everything they can to get folks out of that bucket and, you know, on a plan that they can afford. And these percentages are something that are also very relevant for this Board. So I'll call that out. And then on the next slide, just again.
Cory, before you move on, can you move back two slides to slide number five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When I look at this right here, and you put a full-year estimate on that, and the plan, I could look at these things that we visit about just about every month. Why is it that we don't have the numbers, exact, actual numbers cited?
Well, two years ago, when we changed, how we were approaching this was to provide the range of numbers where we were comfortable. So this is a full-year view. And the reason we did the range was to allow for the flexibility and allowing these metrics to fluctuate where they need to, but still maintain the thresholds relative to our double A minus credit rating. I can get you the metrics offhand, but the full-year estimates that we had when we presented this budget to you back in January were about 1.83 on ADSC. We were 64.7 on debt cap as a target.
Say sixty what?
Can I just interrupt you a second? Everything you're saying is on a slide in the appendix at slide number 19.
I know, I know.
Oh, okay.
I understand. I want to ask a simple question because of this right here. Because for eight years, seven and a half years, I've seen it like that, and I just want to know why it was changing. But since you give me the numbers, I'll take it.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy to read them off, but yeah, I think it's just a different presentation and really just reflecting how we're looking at the ranges. If I'm just going to finish this out for you, days cash on hand was 158 days, and days liquidity was 256. So well within that range, but what this does is allows us to flex, if we need to, on any one of them over the course of the year. But as I mentioned, it's early, it's only the first quarter. I don't think we're at a point to have a discussion of, you know, recalibrating where we think we'll land quite yet in the year. Thank you, sir. Okay. The next slide that I was on is a lot of numbers, but again, just for reference material, this is on our website as well. Sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, please go to Slide 6. We can actually talk about it on this slide as well. What I think would be helpful, especially in light of, frankly, much of public comment, was from one geographic part of our town. It'd be really helpful to be, to understand where we've got at risk of disconnection or in collections and may be written off, you know, if you want to do that by zip code, however you want to help us better get a sense of where this concentration may be, to the extent that helps us inform some of the other things that we're doing. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. And then I'll probably look to Deanna. Her team has a lot of that information. Okay. Thank you. And again, this next slide here, sometimes we're often asked about customer count. This reflects, again, the, in green, the, both the total number of customers that are current and also as a percentage of the entire balance. And then similar colors that we had in the previous slide, the blue being those that are actively engaged and maintaining their plan. And then obviously, the gray are the folks that are at risk for disconnect. What's interesting about this slide is even pre-COVID, the distribution of those percentages is held pretty consistent over time. We're a little over 80% of our customers at any given time are current, even though we've been growing. And then about 20% are in some different status. What's really been interesting is that the dollar balance was the real issue we saw after COVID that we've been working through and working down, which is why I think the earlier slide is helpful. But in order to, again, show the numbers we have, this is on our website as well for customers, and Mayor, we take your feedback as well to look for other ways we can present.
To that point, Cory, I think it'd also be really helpful if we can understand as much as possible that the demographics of that group, are those mainly folks on fixed income? Are those mainly folks that are also utilizing some other form of public assistance? Again, that gives us as best fidelity into who we're actually dealing with here to make sure that our programs are in fact sufficient to address that and ensure that folks can get as current as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm not sure if Deanna has some of that information, but we may actually address that in the next presentation to the extent we have that information. The next slide here continues to be just our bill comparison, sort of combined electric and gas bill. You know, we've mentioned it before, but the benchmark for the usage level, we use as a, the statewide comparison from the powertochoose.com website allows us to see what pricing is. So from a comparability perspective, this has always been the view that we've used. Again, recognizing this is a trailing 12-month, this doesn't include the volatility associated with the seasonality of our bills. And with that, I'll wrap my comments, and the remaining slides I'll have Elena take over for. And then we'll both be happy to answer questions at the end.
It seems like maybe we want to stop here and ask some questions.
I do have a question. Thank you, Chair Romero. Can you go back to slide four, Cory, please? And did I understand correctly that you said that the income is currently behind plan?
So the net income is better than plan. Our forecast was negative 45 net income, but we're actually at negative. Better than plan. That said, we plan to finish the year positive, this is a function of kind of the seasonality in our business.
Right, and I guess my only follow-up to that is I know that historically we lean on strong market months. Part of our strategy is to, you know, even though it's currently well in other areas, it's not 100% where it needs to be. So my question would be to you, are we evaluating any targeted cost controls and potentially reprioritizing now rather than assuming that the market will course correct for us?
Yeah, good question, and as part of our integrated planning efforts that we do annually at the beginning of this year, our leadership team did exactly that. They went through and looked at both capital and O and M spending, and collectively, they've put together kind of a working list in the event that mitigations are necessary. So yes, that exists in the background.
And the frequency of communicating that to the board will help, will happen through what committee? Or in general, will we get it as a report like we do?
Generally, I've only mentioned it at this board when we were approving the budget at the beginning of the year. I don't think we've revisited it because we haven't really executed to it materially yet.
Right, but I mean, just so you know what those contingency plans are, yes?
Good to address that.
I would say process-wise, Trustee Gonzalez, you know, our job is to manage our budget. You know, if we come in over because of wholesale revenues, then we can bring some capital expenses up like we do in the past. I don't know that we've provided the board, at least over, you know, the last few years, lists of things we would cut. We've got, I don't know, Cory, $50 million worth of stuff we can pull levers on if need be. But if that's something the board wants to talk through, you know, we can have that conversation at Ops Oversight or wherever the board feels it's appropriate. But our job is to manage to our budget, you know, zero-sum game. I mean, you know, we've talked about net income in the past, you know, every dollar, it's, you know, every dollar we bring in goes right back into the system. So, you know, again, that's, that's our job to come in at budget.
That's understood, and I respect that. I, as we go through the agenda, probably I'll ask more questions. I would just say one of my, I would just say one of my cautious, I'm cautious, right, risk adverse. We have so many headwinds, including policies being thrown at us both at a federal and state level. And so I do agree that historically we haven't gotten that granular, but I do think this year, consider it. I just believe there's just too many headwinds hitting us, that there's a lot of uncertainty politically, legislation. We've heard, again, economy, so I would just suggest that if we could, y'all consider that.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee. We can definitely take that as an action.
Mayor, any questions for this part?
I have a couple of questions. This is, this is tough stuff, but there's one thing in particular seemed a little shorthandy. So if people are watching, maybe you could explain it a little bit more on slide three and your third bullet.
Gotcha.
I think people reading that or hearing you say it really have no idea what that means.
Yes, we, so STP is our, is the site down in Bay City. It's our nuclear asset that we share with Austin Energy and Constellation. So we had, through a process last year, acquired an additional 2%, but we haven't finished all the regulatory approvals at this point, so it hasn't officially closed yet. But I think what's really good is the addition of this additional 2% will go into our generation stack. And of course, it's carbon-free generation and pretty reliable and affordable, so I think it's really great. So that's really what it's referring to, and hopefully that's helpful in the context you were looking for.
That helps, thank you. And then, I wanted to dig in just a little bit on slide eight about, about the rates. And I spent a lot of time on this yesterday with my bill, and I'll tell people, if you haven't looked at the piece on our website that says "Understanding Your Bill," it's really helpful. And it's the one where they actually show a bill and shows this line means this, this line means that. And, but I know there's a lot of confusion about this. So when we talk about our price, the cents per kilowatt hours, which is also confusing because on the bill it's in dollars and here it's in cents. But as I understand it, there's, there's three things on everybody's bill that are pegged to how many kilowatt hours they use a month. And, well, there might be four. One is energy charge, that's the big one, right? And then fuel adjustment, and then regulatory adjustment. So it's all those things together that come up to the 12.6, is that correct?
Yes, and then there are other things on the bill that get confusing, like trash pickup or some of the other fees. Yeah, those are not included in this.
But this does not include the kilowatt hours you use under peak capacity charge, is that correct?
No, it would be inclusive of that because this is a trailing 12-month, so we're capturing, you know, the, those months.
Okay, so, and, all right, I just want people to understand that, that when they're looking at their bill, where does this 12.6 come from? And, and I also just wanted to throw out there, if people are looking at some of those websites and they show some of the unregulated companies and how their numbers are way lower than this, but there's always, there's a lot more you need to know about that, that, yes, the numbers are low if you're using less than 1,000 kilowatt hours. But if you're using less than 1,000 kilowatt hours, you also have to pay 125 a month just as an extra. And if you use less than 1,000 kilowatt hours, your rate per kilowatt hour goes way up. So I just, I just wanted to make the point that trying to compare just based on websites that say, yes, this is the price, is really confusing and not that helpful.
Yeah, it's, and you have things like, we've talked about this, it's a great point, I think you're making, Chair, is that, you know, there's no introductory price, there's no catch if you go above or below all of that stuff, and it does get confusing. And compounded on top of that is, we recognize this is an average, and there's actually no month in the year where everyone pays the average, right? So you've got wide-ranging in prices too, which is always, you know, difficult from a relatability perspective. So I appreciate you mentioning that, I think it's a great fact.
Okay, thank you. There's also no investment in affordability programs at the unregulated companies.
Oh, yeah, no, the amount of investment we put in is second to none, I think, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Trustee Steen?
So, Mr. Kaczynski, thanks for your presentation today and for all the good work you do for CPS Energy. Last year, at our, at our July Board of Trustees meeting, when you all presented on this same topic, and we're talking about the first quarter performance update, I expressed my disappointment about the time lag, specifically that we were hearing about financial results as of April 30th at the end of July, three months down the road. So this time, you've moved it up a month from July to June, and just want you to know, I appreciate your doing so.
Yes, sir.
And then if you'd please put up slide seven. I'm sorry, slide 17, my mistake, 17. And this is the one entitled Fiscal Year 2026: Year-to-Date Net Income Plan to Action Walk Forward. And I want to focus on the fourth column from the left, and it's the one labeled Net Wholesale Revenue at the bottom. And we can see the red rectangle of negative $14.4 million. And I'll remind everyone that CPS Energy's fiscal year 2025 financial performance was considerably better than planned because of unexpected incurrences, chiefly higher wholesale values. And wholesale values, and correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't they 281 million last year?
Last year, net of fuel, that sounds a little bit high, but it was around the 250 to 260 range. It was significant.
Anyway, we made that when CPS Energy sold excess electricity into the grid during periods of high demand. And importantly for people to know, that's income that doesn't come from our customers' pockets. And you've often called this, and I'm quoting you, "a one-time lift in revenue."
That's correct.
And for perspective, I believe for, I believe, for, for, I believe the three years prior to fiscal year 2023, CPS Energy came in below forecasted wholesale revenues, which created financial stress. Is that, is that right?
In my first year in this role, we were about 20 million under.
All right, so these revenues, the fluctuation of wholesale revenues prevents us from relying on them. So with that as a preface, and noting that the fourth column is red and shows a negative $14.4 million, I'd like your perspective on fiscal year 2026 wholesale revenues as of April 30th and then as of today. And are you concerned about coming in below your planned net wholesale revenues as this happened, as has happened not that long ago?
So I appreciate the question, and I'll actually revisit some of the comments I made earlier in the year around this particular topic. One of the things that we've done from a strategy perspective on the wholesale revenue, because it's a larger part of our forecast, is try to lock in certainty. So whereas in the past, in those early years, the wholesale revenue net of fuel was merely a function of our excess supply and the real-time spot market pricing, scarcity pricing, and we, and it was good for CPS. However, as our length has grown in the near term because of our generation plan, we wanted to put some more certainty around those revenues. So our teams, under Benny Etheridge's leadership and broadly as a strategy team, have focused on locking in some of those revenues through midterm and long-term deals. In other words, you can guarantee, so to speak, what that margin of revenue looks like. Our strategy generally going into this particular year was around 70% to 80% of our forecast to get under that construct, which, which has been done by, by the team. So there is some certainty, but there is still some volatility. So the second point that I had made earlier in the year, and I'll kind of go back to, Trustee Gonzalez, your comment, part of the exercise that we had done in terms of this year's potential budget mitigation was say, hey, look at, what is the amount of potential revenue that could be at risk that isn't locked in and doesn't have revenue certainty? What type and what dollar amount mitigations do need to be put in place in the event, you know, a trend like this sustains itself over the course of a year? So that's the other lever that we have is on the budget side. That said, we're in constant communication with the front, you know, the folks that are on the front lines putting together these transactions and deals. And at this point, we think that, you know, the year-end target materially, you know, should be similar where we had estimated it to forecast, maybe give or take 10 or 15 million. And 10 or 15 million would probably be a range that I think we'd still be fine in if that were the case. So this being 14.4, right now, the first quarter, I don't, I don't see elevating it to a risk beyond a watch item, which is a fair point, I think it should be a watch item always. So hopefully, I've kind of given you some context, Trustee Steen, that helps frame that out for now.
Yes, you have, thank you.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a couple more questions. And these are confirmations. Mr. Kaczynski, please remind me what CPS Energy's total indebtedness is today. And, and I want to think that it's approaching $9 billion by the end of the fiscal year, would that be correct?
It's currently in the low 8 billions, and based on the budget that we're executing to, it will be closer to 9 billion by the end of this fiscal year.
And wasn't it around $6 billion a few years ago?
Yes, sir.
All right, and so this means it's ballooned by 50% in that period of time. And our annual debt service is roughly $520 million or north of half a billion dollars, is that correct?
Approximately.
All right, and isn't our debt capitalization ratio, which is CPS Energy's leverage metric, roughly 65%?
The target for the end of the year is 64.7. We're a little bit lower than that by a couple of percentage points currently.
Okay, so 64.7.
64.7 is the target that we had laid out when we approved the budget at the beginning of the year.
Are you still baking into your financial projections and models a 5.5% base rate increase every two years?
Those estimates continue to get refreshed, but from the perspective of needing recurring rate increases every other year or so to sustain the generation plan, yes. And to your point, the last number we had said publicly was that five and a half. But there's no commitment, obviously, at this point because we'll continue to redo our forecasts.
And finally, is it still CPS Energy's plan to push for such a rate hike early next year?
Again, I think there's no commitment at this point on, on timing, but we'll go through this year in our summer months like we always do, and the critical time for us is post the summer months to see what that performance is that allows us to do reforecasting.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I had some questions on the accounts receivable situation, but maybe I'll, maybe I should wait till after Ms. Hardwick gives your presentation.
They overlap a bit today.
Well, it's not really questions, I think I just want to refresh my memory. So the business world, you could do a couple of things. You can pay for it all cash, or if the borrowing terms are fairly well, you want to borrow. So how, I know we have debt, so what is our average borrowing capacity? And when is it better to use cash, and when is it better to just use the great terms that we have?
I mean, it's constantly a balancing question. Right now, our long-term debt average is in the low fours, about 4.1, 4.2%. And our short-term rates, which are relevant because we use commercial paper as we execute our capital plan, are around that or lower. So just by a function of those rates, it allows us to borrow affordably and spread the payback over time, which allows us to have lower bills and kind of spread that cost out. Conversely, if we were to use cash all the way upfront, that's just a function of rate increases because it's dollar-for-dollar. So we always constantly balance that cash to debt spread. Because we have a large capital plan, we are actually, you know, hitting the pedal higher on the borrowing component than cash because that would mean, you know, more rate increases, whatever. So to your point, those are kind of the-
Tools.
-tools that we have, but our borrowing rates are incredibly favorable, I mean, they're-
And that's tied to, again, having a good, a rate, a positive, again, a-
Yeah.
-rating with, credit rating.
Absolutely, yeah, our credit-
So no different than a consumer either can afford to pay the car in 36 months or 72 months, and we're going to choose, depending on our budget situation, 72 versus 36, depending on variable rates, right? And how much of our, how much of our costs right now would be reimbursable, or none of it would be? The debt is a debt.
Oh, yeah, not sure what you mean, but no, it's just the recovery of our debt service, so like-
Right.
-our mortgage payment is built in through rates.
Right, I understand that, but I was just curious if you can just expand a little bit more about it.
I guess, who would reimburse us, I guess? You mean from like another entity other than our customers?
Well, I'm sorry, maybe I'm misspeaking. I'm talking about like capital projects, so we already discussed the rates, we already talked about-
Yeah, Trustee Gonzalez, I would say this, you know, the, our current rate structure supports, you know, the debt service that we take on to try to balance the need for rate increases with, you know, leveraging our bond rating, you know, to borrow money at a really, really, you know, cheap cost. You know, we, the, how we execute our capital plan depends on our ability to support the debt service necessary. And so if we didn't borrow as much, or we chose to defees some of the bonds early and take some of our equity and pay that off, then we're just, you know, we're just going to have to back off of our capital plan to accomplish that, or as Cory said, ask for more, you know, for higher rate increases, you know, down the road. So, I mean, our job as a leadership team is try to manage all that, you know, execute to our capital plan as aggressively as possible while, while trying to keep all the rest of it in balance. But it's just a combination of strategic utilization of our debt- But it's just a combination of strategic utilization of our debt, of knowing when to, you know, go to our community and ask for rate support. I mean, to Trustee Steen's question, you know, we as a leadership team have to go to the city and go to, come to the board and ask for rate support when it's necessary, whether that's, you know, in the spring or in the fall, or the following year, whenever. You know, if we want to maintain our bond rating, we've got to keep all that stuff in a balance and try our best to do all the things that, you know, a utility of our size is required to stay ahead of the investment curve. So, so it's all, it, it all has to work together and collaboratively, which is why those different financial metrics, you know, why we have to pay attention to all of them, because they're all necessary.
And then just the last comment. We often hear profits that were profit-driven. Can, can you explain exactly that we're not
Yeah, no, I mean, I
under the state law and then the way the budget works and the way things work? Can you kind of talk a little bit about that? Because it does bother me when people think profits over citizens.
Yeah. No, I think that's a, that's a great point, Trustee Gonzalez, so thank you for bringing it up. Excuse me. Yeah, you know, we are, we are a, a non-for-profit in the sense that we're a cost recovery business. And while there is a net income statement, I actually put on the slide here, to your point, the flow of funds, because in our bond ordinance, as you know, it outlines how our revenue should be applied. And really, the flow of funds is really how you view how we manage the revenues coming in and how we apply it. And it's very deliberative in, in where it says revenues must first be applied to, you know, the operations of the business, and then it, for your debt service, which is your mortgage payment. And then you must put 6% of your gross revenues into a savings account effectively for your capital plan. And then there's the city payment, and then if there is anything left over, it rolls into your repair and replacement account to support your capital plan. So there really isn't profit motive. It's about cost recovery and then maintaining those financial metrics that allow us to borrow at 4%. And that's really how we kind of manage it. So I, I think it's a great point that you brought up, there, there isn't a profit motive by design through our governance, and, and how we manage it corresponds to that.
Yeah. And, and again, I know there's a lot more of the questions I want to keep moving to, to the agenda, but that may be, maybe along with explaining the bill, that might be something maybe for future considerations as we go out there into the community more, explain again exactly what you just explained to me. And it's still very technical, but maybe if they, it's translated in a way of this is what supports all the giving back to the community, this is what supports the nine programs that we have, this is what supports this line item, this budget supports REIT or weatherization. And so maybe there's a need to translate that a little bit, just, just translate it easier, because it is still, as much as I understand, still very technical, and so that's something that we might want to consider in the future. Because I can tell you here, I don't sit here and say, oh, more profits, you know?
Right.
I, I don't think any of us believe that that's what we want to do or should do. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Can we move along to Ms. Ball, and then we'll still have time for questions?
Madam Chair, the, the slide that I wanted to comment on is actually part of Corey Kojinski, but it relates to accounts receivable. And what, so I've got a few things to say about it. Do you want me to do it now?
Let's hold it for accounts receivable item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, oh, excuse me, Board and, Mayor and Board. I wanted to just go over two slides today. The first is an update through April of 2025. This is consistent with the financial briefing you just had. This highlights our enterprise scorecard. This scorecard delineates the, the high-level milestones and actions that we have occurring under our Vision 2027 Plan. They're in four key areas, the Power Generation Plan, our System Resiliency and Growth Plan, our Digital Evolve, which is our Enterprise Resource Planning Project, as well as our customer experience. The takeaway from this slide is that all of our actions are on track, with the exception of one in our Power Generation Planning area. While the work is on track, we do have a little bit of a schedule slide. The area is focused on awarding key contracts specific to engineering procurement and construction of a peaking project here in Bear County, as well as our planned project to convert Spruce II to natural gas. And the primary drivers behind the little bit of schedule slip for the Peker project, it is considering some alternatives around the Peker project, as well as continued engineering work for the EPC contract. For Spruce II and the natural gas conversion, we have, we have, we have contracted with an owner's engineer. We did release the technical specs to our supply base in the month of May. However, we did onboard external counsel to work with our owner's engineer to go through our full bid spec package. We're focused on ensuring that the design that we have enabled for conversion of Spruce II from coal to gas does not result in any net reduction in capacity. There are implications at the federal level. There, there have been some recent federal actions taken by the, the federal administration around continued operation of coal and fossil fuel resources. And we want to ensure that we're executing the project in a manner that allows us to convert from coal to gas. So we're sort of getting another set of eyes to grade our technical design. We do expect to release the full design to our supply base in the month of July. The next slide I have is, for you all, is just an update on our enterprise measure results. And as a reminder, these are the eight enterprise measures that we set annually as our scorecard is an enterprise. I will highlight that as of the end of April, all of our measures are on track, with the exception of safety. I will note, however, there are two measures that we have been watching since the month, the end of April, that we do see could become at risk, and I will highlight the, the drivers for that. Specific to safety, as of the end of April, we did have, we have had 16 OSHA recordables, which puts us at risk for the end of year. Through May, we've had 19 OSHA recordables. The larger number of recordables are in really two key areas, one in lacerations and, and two in musculos, musculo, muscular skeletal injuries. We've had five lacerations and nine muscular injuries. Safety, along with our operations leadership team, has been focused on ensuring that we're working through our ergonomic practices for each of these injuries, reemphasizing and focusing on stretching and ensuring that we're focused on these two failure modes or, or risks at tailboards. Additionally, since we're moving into summer, there's been a real focus on a heat awareness campaign for, for the workforce. I did want to highlight that our system reliability, while showing on track on this slide, we've had a series of storms over the last two months, and they've been, well, they haven't been classified technically as major events. They have been significant storms. We've had higher-than-normal rainfall. We've had significant ground-to-lightning strike patterns that have resulted in higher outages. And so, again, we're, we're highlighting that our system average interruption duration index, which effectively is our reliability metric, is, is trending in a manner that will put it, will likely put it at risk in subsequent quarterly updates. There are a number of mitigation measures that the transmission distribution teams are working on to bring that into, into focus, looking at, you know, accelerating our vegetation management. We've, we have trimmed over 224 miles to date, looking at areas that are prone to vehicle accidents, as well as looking at some of our infrastructure and refocusing on critter mitigation, ensuring that we, we can keep wildlife out of our infrastructure. Another area I would highlight, and this is actually tied to the wholesale discussion that occurred with Mr. Kojinski's presentation, is our plant availability. Again, this slide through April is showing us on track. However, we have had a, a handful of plant, unplanned outages that have occurred predominantly in the month of May and June. Specifically, we've had tube leaks on our Spruce II unit. Our Summers II unit has been in a D-rate due to a condensate, condensate pump failure. Barney Davis has been in a prolonged planned outage, and we've had some steam turbine stop valve issues on Nuasis Bay for the combined cycle unit there. So at this point, we do believe they're recoverable, but we are going to have to execute with excellence throughout the summer in order to ensure that we remain on track with, with those outages. So with that, that concludes my remarks on our performance today. I welcome any questions I may have.
All right. Start over here. Trustee Steen, comments, questions?
So I still have one on, on Slide 7, which I want to get to before we, we leave this agenda item, so I don't know if I should do it now. Go ahead. And Mr. Kojinski, and maybe Ms. Hardwick, yeah. And by the way, Ms. Hardwick, just like I thanked Corey Kojinski earlier, I want to thank you too for giving us a lot more information on the accounts receivable situation.
Yes, ma'am.
What I want to do is put up Slide 7, which is, which is entitled Accounts Receivable Current Versus Past Due Account. And I want to direct your attention to the last column on the right, which addresses the number of CPS Energy past due accounts as of March 2025. And to boil it down, please confirm that the portion of our customers who are in arrears, or, or another way to say it is past due, is rough, is roughly 20%?
Yes, sir.
And isn't this basically the same percentage as the first three columns?
Yes, sir.
So is it accurate to say that today 20% of our residential customers are, are in arrears or past due?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, Ms. Hardwick, respectfully, in, in regard to this ongoing problem, isn't it fair to say that basically there's been no significant improvement in the percentage of our customers in arrears over the past six years? Doesn't this chart show that?
What I think that this chart shows is that we do have in total the same percentage of customers that are past due. However, we have less customers that are eligible for their accounts to be disconnected and more uncommitted installment plans than, and they're more successful than ever before. So from a percentage perspective, yes, it's still about 20%, but in, in total, the, the details below kind of break out a little bit of a different story, where customers, we're doing everything we can to prevent disconnects, but at the same time, we're trying to get ahead of it, and we're monitoring it. And those customers on committed installment plans, on average, it's 80% success rate. And what we're also able to see on this slide is that the average customer past due bill in October was a little, it was over $800, and now we're down to it being about $600. So those installment plans are eating into the past due balances and keeping those accounts current. So we're actually making significant progress.
Well, and, and I think there are different ways of looking at it, but I think if you're just looking at it this way, I think it is accurate to say that there's been no improvement. And we've had people here earlier talking about this problem, and it, it, it's, it's an intractable problem, but you can go back six years and it was 80% then, and, I mean, it was, it was, do you have something to say?
I just want to reemphasize the point that I said earlier. The, the, the composition, and this is, and it's maybe a little technical, like, when we talk about the risk profile of the composition of past due accounts from, say, a rating agency perspective, what Deanna just highlighted, the fact that the blue has gone up and the gray has gone down, they view the, while the totality of the percentage is still the same, the, the mix of that is different. So you've got customers now that are on payment plans that they can stay current on, and that's probably the, the more, I guess, impressive feature of, of the work. So I only say that to provide a perspective from at least the rating agency's point of view, which hopefully is, is helpful.
Can I make a comment, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I mean, we, we've, for six years, or three years, or two years, we've often heard these statements. I, I cannot, again, I'm not here to call out my trustees, but it shouldn't be about picking sides. You know, in my opinion, we need to ensure our systems protect both people and the utility. This means insurance policy applied consistently and with compassion, but also that we remain financially viable, and that is the balancing act. And so I have some other questions and statements I'm going to make, but I'm going to hold those. Again, I just feel like we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be taking sides among different segments of the population. We got to do the right thing, and that is a hard balancing act. And so that's, that's just my only comment.
Well, I, I wanted to emphasize what, just briefly, what an intractable problem it is, and, and we can look at different ways to measure it, but it continues to be 20% of our customers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And just for the, if I remember correctly, 20% would still be happening, and I don't want to make sure this is accurate, whether we had had COVID or not.
That's, that's about right. So if you look at January
So that's a, that's a national average potentially. This has nothing to do with pandemic, pre-pandemic or post-pandemic results. We would be having this conversation, or you would be presenting this data to us regardless.
Yes, yes.
So if we didn't politicize it, that would still be the average number.
Yes, ma'am.
And we would still have all the programs, and we still would be doing outreach, and we would still be trying to figure out how to compassionately address it for those who, who don't like the number. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that's important not to lose sight of is, I think, the point that Corey just made, which is, is if you might not see much variation in the number itself, the way in which we're addressing it puts us more favorably in the eyes of those that we're going to ask money for, right? Our bond rating. So, I mean, maybe that would be helpful in terms of helping folks, if there's a challenge with this chart, helping people understand this is how we were viewed, right, by the bond rating folks at one point. We've changed that, and now this is how we're viewed here favorably, to help people understand, in fact, the benefit of, of this approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes. I, I look at this, and I'm looking at this chart right here, and if you look at it in 2020, January 2020, we 845,000. And you look at the growth in April 2025, we 965,000. And then we look across that, paying on time, we have 702,083% in, in April 2025, we have 82%, which is 1% difference. However, when I go down and look at the actively engaged maintaining their current plan, and that's the one that's on the payment plan, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have 22,000, which is 3%, and we have 69,000, which is 7%. So it looked like it's gone up some right there that are on a payment plan.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then we look at the 82,000, which is the at-risk of disconnections, not risk of disconnection, at-risk of disconnection, 82,000, out of the 845,000, which is a 10%, 10%, because we know 10% of 845,000 is 84.5%. But we're looking at 82%, so a little bit, you know, 10%, but we look over here at, in April 2025, 965, with 70,000, and it's 7%. So we've gone down.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I'm missing something. I'm just, I'm looking at this.
You're right.
Okay. Am I right?
Yes, sir.
Which is down. What does it down mean?
Less, less customers are at risk.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay. Now, we go to the in-collection and maybe written-off, and we have 4%. It's 39,000 of the 845,000 residents in San Antonio.
Yes, sir.
Bear County of our collection.
Yes, sir.
But we look at the past due over here, we look at the number of customers, 965, and we look at 39,000, we're looking at 4%. So I'm a little confused, Corey, on this right here, is I'm looking at that with the number of, of customers, 965 compared to 845, with the blue, which is actively engaged and maintaining current, it seems like we're doing better. But then it goes to the 82,000 in the at-risk of disconnection compared to the in-collection and maybe written-off. Can you explain that in-collection and maybe written-off so I could better understand that?
Yes, sir. Those are accounts of where people have moved out, or they are no longer at their, wherever their service was, and they just haven't paid their final bill.
Okay.
So that we have a slow, I think it's about 180 days, that we use external collection agencies to try and get that final bill. And if we are unsuccessful in getting that, that amount collected, then it goes, it gets, goes through a process to be written off. And the only way we'll ever recover that is if someone moves back into our service territory or opens up a new account, and their information becomes available to us, and then that amount does come back to their, their new account.
Okay. Now, looking at this right here, going on, and Deanna, do you feel that we get better at this with all the, the agencies and the REIT program? And how, how do we determine who gets extra help in these programs? How do we determine that? You know, with all these, these near disconnection, disconnect or at-risk connect, how do we determine who benefits from our excess determine who benefits from our excess programs that we're raising funds for?
We have a series of qualifications, so some of that's income, age. So if you're low income, if someone is of a certain age, so elderly and senior citizens. Customers can also qualify, if you have a disability, we have a burn veterans discount as well. And then we have a couple other qualifications, and do want to, I'll be talking about this in the next presentation, but appreciate the fact that during our last rate, after our last rate increase, we were able to expand qualifications to get more people enrolled in both our affordability discount program as well as in REAP.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Mackey, let me just add, on the, on the past due balances that are written off, we budget that every year. And from an accounting perspective, you know, we'll move it off our books and retire that, you know, that debt at some point in time. We have done better than what we have budgeted because of these activities that Deanna, you know, and her team undergo to, to keep those customers on a payment plan that works for them. So that's a benefit to our budget when we don't have to write it off, and we keep it in play because they're, they're doing a really good job of getting that money in.
Well, we're on this slide, which is sort of a Rorschach test now. Can you go back to seven again for a second? I mean, I do think it shows something positive, but there's a question I've brought up before that always confuses me. When the numbers get better, for example, so we see people moving off of at risk of disconnection, but we're never quite sure if they've gone to the lower category, which is not good, although it's mitigated, or if they're going into the positive direction of actively engaged in maintaining their plan or even up to current. And that's always, and I know it would be a very complex chart to have to put that in here, but I'm still curious as to, as to where we are going with that. So I know, you know, we're real proud of, for good reason, we're proud of putting people on these payment plans, but if, then, then what? And so maybe even for one year, at some point, we could just track, you know, from one year to the next, exactly how did those changes come about, because people are moving in a positive or negative direction.
Yes, ma'am. We can, we're still working through our data, you know, we have some, some challenges, but we do know that for accounts that unfortunately do end up being disconnected, we have over a 90% success rate of those accounts being reconnected within 24 to 48 hours. But we can continue to delve into the data to see how we can kind of help show you where where folks are moving from which bucket to which bucket.
Okay, yeah, and, and longer term, so not just the 24 to 48 days.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I listened to you, Deanna. You mentioned military, disability.
Senior citizens, yes.
Listening and helping with the different programs. You know, how do we turn, what percentage they're getting? How do we determine that? Who determines that?
So.
Do we have something documented, written, that we could tell people?
Yes, sir. We do have our affordability discount program that, based on if you have gas or electric, has a certain amount. We can provide that, that information. I think it's about 100, I have to remember, it's about, it's under $15 on the electric side, it's a few dollars on the gas side, but we can show you, and that's based on if you're, if you meet the qualifications, you get that discount. For REAP, the amount is based on if you're in the city or in the county, and that part is set by the, the REAP board, which is made up of mayor telling you, you're welcome to a new board, and the county judge, as well as Rudy. And our teams work together to determine what additional assistance that we can provide for customers that are, need emergency assistance to prevent being shut off. Thank you, sir.
We have one more question for Cory, but then I really want to transition to Deanna's actual presentation, which is going to answer a lot of these questions.
And so I'm going to ask a question, and maybe you don't have to spend a lot of time in answering it, and then I'll just end with a quick statement. But I did have a question. So whether more customers sign up for payment assistance, or we consider to pause disconnections for a longer period of time, how will we prepare for the impact of collections and cash flow? And maybe we're not ready to answer that, and I don't want you to pivot to her because we're going to have to follow up with her. Maybe just, maybe consider that?
Okay.
Maybe we don't have to answer it today, or maybe she can answer, but I do want that eventually in some form or fashion answered, because we've heard for more than several months, no disconnects, no disconnects, can we consider other things? Or not necessarily other things, but what did that impact actually will have if we edit or the current policy? And then I just want to end with this. You know, I believe in maintaining the discipline in how we interpret financial performance, and not just in terms of meeting plan targets, but in protecting the core services to our customers they rely on. We should be cautious not to let short-term fluctuations distract us from long-term capital resources. And that said, affordability, affordability risk is very real, and I support us continuing to sharpen our financial model so that we make good decisions, smart decisions, ahead of the rate regulatory pressures and not after that. So I want to thank both you and Alaina for that presentation. But again, I just want to stress that affordability risk is real, and that we must continue to sharpen those financial models.
Yes, sir. On slide 25, the customer experience, the milestone of onboarding a consultant to develop a customer experience, can you speak a little bit as we try to differentiate the customer experience of the various customers that CPS serves? Don't have to go into great detail, but can you give me a sense of, you know, how we understand this for residents, for small businesses, for large corporations, to understand, you know, how we might be able to incorporate that, again, information into other things that we're doing?
Yes, Mayor, that's exactly the point. Right now, for the most part, what we do is we're able to look at data differently from a residential customer perspective, then we can break it down into our small, medium business, businesses, and then our large commercial and industrial customers. The customer experience work that we're doing is going to take it down even to a deeper level to help get to more defined segments and understand what certain people, the different ways that people try to get or prefer to do business with us. Some people prefer to see us in person, some people want to never have to talk to us if possible. So it's making sure that we understand all of the preferences, all of the needs, and breaking it down with the customer data that we do have available to us, and also seeing what additional data we need to be able to, to gather and then organize in a way that we can, that it's meaningful and help direct our outreach, our communications, our service, and our support.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Ball? Because otherwise, we are ending this presentation and going to Ms. Hardwick's. But any, any questions for Ms. Ball on her slides? On her slides?
Well.
I think, I think we should just start Ms. Hardwick's presentation then. We've been on this one a very long time.
I would like to go back to slide seven. Give me two sentences or three sentences on it.
We're going to get to this one in a second. I'm, I'm going to end this agenda item if nobody has questions for Ms. Ball.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we are on agenda item nine, Accounts Receivables Process and Support with Ms. Hardwick.
Thank you, and thanks for letting me be here. And while they bring up the, the presentation, I'll go ahead and start and kick it off it. You know, I'm here, one, to respond to all of the public comments that we've had the opportunity to hear, as well as representing the hard work that our over 600 employees on the customer strategy team do to support our community. And trustee Gonzalez, you just mentioned this, but it's definitely what, true, there's a delicate balance between being empathetic and providing the support that our community deserves, as well as the business and legal requirements, so I'll be talking about that. But, you know, ultimately, I just want to show that for us, it's not just a collections process, it's empathy and actions. Disconnects are part of the process, but they're the last resort, and that's only when necessary.
Well, and let me just be clear, we don't have a disconnect policy. We have an accounts receivable, that's why this presentation is our accounts receivable process. You know, we have a collection process that leads to disconnect beyond a certain point. If you don't, you either call us and tell us you're having an issue, get on a payment plan, whatever. Our terms and conditions set the manner in which we provide service to our customers, but there is no policy related to disconnects. There's an accounts receivable process that leads to disconnection, you know, which Deanna will walk you through the timeline, so I just want to be clear on that.
I need to have a point of order here. I'm getting texts from people saying that the live stream is breaking up, so if somebody can look into that, and if you're trying to watch, know that we're working on it if the problem is still happening.
Thank you. So just walking through the agenda, I'll discuss what's happening nationwide, also talk about the legal requirements that we must follow. As Rudy mentioned, I'll be talking about our customer and billing, as well as outreach processes, as well as the many ways that we offer support to help prevent accounts from being disconnected. And here you'll see headlines from across the country where utilities are consistently facing a growing challenge. And this is just some examples, but here on the next slide, by the National Energy Assistance Directors Association, they have pointed out, at the end of 2024, they pointed out that national arrears have risen more than 36% since 2022. Actually, one of the utilities, LADWP, they are up over $1 billion in past due accounts. But at CPS Energy, we've actually gone the, the other direction when you look at the total amount that's past due. And, and you know, Cory just covered that. But it's all about our proactive outreach, as well as the strong partnerships that we have in our community that helps us prevent and continues to help us maintain that balance. And one thing I want to highlight is that because of the success, like I mentioned, most utilities are going one direction in the total amounts that pass due, we're going in the opposite direction. And so that really does lead us to be an industry leader. And up here, you see an example of one of the awards that we've received over the last year, but we have others mentioned, just really highlighting that we, we do set the standard for other utilities. Rudy Garza mentioned it, I think Cory mentioned it as well. Most utilities come to us to find out how we can help them connect with their communities better, and we continue to try and work with as many communities across the nation. And, and I'll go into this a little bit later, we work very closely with a lot of community partners here in San Antonio. But one thing I want to highlight here, and this is a fresh slide that we've had, we work with a benchmarking company called First Quartile Consultants, and they've been our, they've done our benchmarking work for over a decade now. They look at, they look, they slice and dice the data a little bit differently than what you're used to using, and this is to try and normalize the experience for snapshots in time. So the data that we've showed in the last presentation shows the percentage of customers that are due at the end of the month, but it doesn't, it doesn't take into consideration the changes of the days and when the months fall and, and all that good stuff. But when you look at it from a national benchmark, benchmarking perspective, we rank third in the total percentage of accounts receivables that are current, and that means that we're in the top quartile. Again, another example of how we're the industry leader, and, and, you know, underpinned by that, I don't have a slide on this, but you've heard me speak about it multiple times, is it really comes down to the installment plans that we've been able to connect with our community. Our installment plans are also, according to the same study, in the top quartile in terms of percentage being successful. And so we're continuing to find ways to connect customers with solutions that work for them as best as we possibly can. Here, I'll talk about our statutory requirements. We are bound by Texas law, and I just want to point out that according to Texas law, we are not allowed to offer free service. Texas law does require us to collect enough to cover our operating costs, as well as meet our financial obligations. And Cory often references the importance of our flow of funds to represent how we do just that. I know there's lots of talk about what we do with surplus revenues, and the flow of funds really represents how we do that in accordance with the statute. Ultimately, this, this approach allows us to make sure that we are consistent with everyone and aren't providing unequal treatment. But at the same time, we are allowed and encouraged to offer, offer assistance programs, and that's something I feel we do very aggressively, as I mentioned, being an industry leader. And, you know, I want to start with, with this reality for, for the team and for the community. No one wants to disconnect power. It's not us, not our partners, and definitely not the families and businesses that we support. So that's why we try and have as many outreach and possible connections throughout the community without the customer, throughout, with the customers. Over a course of 44 days, we have calls, mail notices, as well as emails to let customers know that their accounts are coming due and what the status is. And, you know, at 2:00 today, if you're signed up for our energy alerts, you got a notification that weather was on this way, but you can also get those energy alerts to let you know when your, your bill is available, when your bill is coming due, if you're past due, if you're getting close to disconnection. So we're continuing to try and find as many touch points as possible to help be in line with the, to help customers get ahead of the disconnect before it happens to get to that point. I do know that we've had a lot of calls about the extreme heat or extreme cold, and we are, we do have, we're consistent with the Texas PUC ruling as well, that we do pause disconnections during extreme heat, cold, and weather emergencies. And it's, what that is, is a period when the day, previous day's highest temperature does not exceed 32 degrees Fahrenheit, and the temperature is predicted to remain at or below 32 degrees. Now, this is all according to the National Weather Service, as well as from a heat perspective. If the National Weather Service issues a heat advisory for a county in the CPS Energy service area, we do not do disconnections of accounts for the first two days, first two calendar days following the termination of such of advisory. So from a safety perspective, it's not just something that we, that is policy, it's definitely something that we take to heart. But for us, that's where it continues to do, we want to do everything we can to help prevent it from getting to disconnection. And so bundled care, you've heard me talk about that before, and this is what we call our comprehensive outreach. We take a bundled care approach because one size fits all doesn't work for families or businesses that are struggling. It's not just about bills, it's about helping customers access all available support, including agency programs, weatherization, food assistance, and more. A couple of the programs, and Dr. Mackey, thank you for, for asking about some of the eligibility components. One thing I want to talk about is our installment plans. We talked about the success rate that we have on those installment plans, and one of those reasons is that we will work with each customer based on what their needs are. If you need a few days, we will help you find a few days to get some money or to find some support. If you need to pay that off over the course of three months, we'll work with you. But we have installment plans that go over, up to two years, sometimes, some a little bit longer, with no, no installment plan fee, right? We don't charge an interest rate. We just try and find customers that good balance of what's going to help them stay current on their current bill, as well as being able to eat into their past due bills so that we can help them get out of that cycle.
Yeah, let me just add on that point, in the competitive market in Texas, you might get three to six months if you're lucky. So, you know, we're a broad divergence of what the, the rest of the, of the state, most of the rest of the state of Texas experiences.
Thank you. And I've talked about in the past the 200 agencies that we, we partner with. One thing I haven't really talked about is how those agencies also partner with us. So you see up here, we have a list of over 120 active agencies. They actually have access to an agency portal where, based on certain require, security requirements, we can share customer account information based on customer consent, so that can help them as they're trying to see how, who they can help and how. And if they don't want to use our portal, we also have a dedicated phone number for those agencies. So if there's an agency out there that you know needs assistance, I know that, we had a speaker today, I asked one of our team members to follow up with her to see, can we, can we talk about what agencies, if, if her agency is part of this, and if not, how do we get her connected? But as I've talked about the bundled care, I haven't always had an opportunity to tell you with the full story, is a lot of times I tell you about the process, I want to talk to you about the people behind the process. So here I have, I'm going to talk about two folks, but before I do, Oscar and Joy, if you'll both stand up. So these two are individuals that go out and connect with our community. And I know that, as the speakers mentioned, not everybody has an opportunity to get to interact with customers, but these folks, both of them are just examples of the more than 6,000 folks that we interact with every single day. So they can either, you can go ahead and sit down.
Well, and I would encourage you, any board member who has an interest is always welcome to ride along with any of our employees to see what we do and how we do it on a daily basis. These crew members are the heart and soul of our customer outreach, and I am sure they would love to have you ride along with them to see, you know, how, how much effort goes into our customer outreach. So thank you all for the work that you do.
Thank you. So I'm going to give you two examples of what bundled care does and how it all comes together. First, I'm going to talk about Rose. Rose is a grandmother who's taking care of her grandchildren. Her and her husband now have new medical equipment at home that's resulting in an additional financial hardship. Our, our crew member, I think Rose was, was Joy, worked with Joy, and not only was Joy able to sign them up for critical care affordability, I mean, critical care program, so she gets additional time to pay her bill, additional outreach whenever there's a storm that impacts her, also were able to sign her up for the affordability discount program. But on top of that, she received additional assistance from San Antonio Hope, or SA Hope, which provides utility assistance. They also provide faith and financial support classes to help people who are struggling with their bills. with their bills. But also, she received Bear County Utility Assistance as well as utility assistance from the city. Rose received nearly $18,000 in value for agency payments, discounts, weatherization, energy savings, and financial counseling through our bundled care approach. And most importantly, she stayed safe and was able to stay connected. Next, I'm going to talk about David, and Oscar had the pleasure of working with David. And in the past, you hear me talk about how many doors that we knock on, and part of the crew team, they not only do some of those door knocking, but they also take, whenever we get a referral, they'll go out to the customer's house. Well, this is one that whenever we went out to the house, the crew member, when he visited him, he observed that the customer was sleeping on the floor. He also identified that there was a little food in the house. But with the bundled support, he was able to help the senior citizen, got a mattress from ACOG, was able to get food from Salvation Army, as well as Mills on Wheels, and then able to get assistance paying his bills, resulting in over $12,000 in total support. This is all coming together, and we know that we can't do it alone. And that's really what I want to emphasize, we're proud of what we've accomplished, and we've gotten, been able to work with Congressman Castro, we're able to expand the qualification for our assistance programs, as Dr. Mackey, as you had asked about. We're here, we're here helping people each and every day. We've raised more money for REAP than ever before with partnership of the city and the county, and we have the highest amount available for support in both the Bear County funds as well as the city funds for REAP. And all of this, again, continues to go recognized across the industry. J.D. Power recognized us in our corporate citizens as number one across three different areas when it comes to being a good community partner. And, you know, before I go on there, as I mentioned, our folks, we're out in the community each and every day, we're out in the community nearly 10 times on average, Monday through Saturday, and we interact with over 6,000 customers every day. So we are in there, working with customers, trying to find the right way to support them. And our assistance finder is something that is new for us, but it helps us be able to continue to direct customers to where there's more assistance. I know that there was a question or a comment earlier today about website pages for the data centers, and yes, we do have something available for our large load customers, but we do have seven locations on our website that reference customer assistance programs. And this is one of our newest ones, trying to help bring it together. So near the end of last year, we rolled this out, and what this does is it allows a customer to put in, answer a brief amount of information, as well as they can self-attest that that information is accurate, so it's income, age, all the stuff that we need to be able to gather information to sign them up or see what services that they're available for. And this helps make that more accessible, so they get driven to, hey, you might want the budget payment plan, or you might prefer being on the senior citizen late fee waiver program. It helps customers realize, oh, you are eligible for affordability discount program. It's just one more way that we're using when directing customers to be able to find out the assistance that's available to them. And here's just some of the programs that we've talked about. You know, I mentioned senior citizen billing, we have over 60,000 senior citizens enrolled. One thing that we do find out is some people don't want to be considered as senior citizens, so they say, thank you for offering, but no, I'm not that old person. We do have about 3,000 customers that are enrolled in critical care billing. I think this is something that we continue to look for an opportunity to see which customers need, rely on medical assistance. Again, it gives them more time, medical assistance, medical equipment in their house, and it gives them more time for their, to have their bill due, they have more touchpoints than what I had highlighted earlier before, and more outreach whenever we do, they do experience an outage. And then REAP, so far this year, we've got $1.3 million donated. Our energy angels, that allows you, if you know a friend, family member, or you just want to help someone in need, you can direct those funds specifically to an account. Some people in REAP want to donate, some people know someone directly that they want to support, so we have our energy angels. I talked about our installment plans and our due date extensions. We also have our budget billing program that allows us to eliminate the seasonality, so takes your last 12 bills, averages it out, and you know how much is due every single month. And if there's a past due balance, we'll also help you by applying that over the course of those, that 12 months to help get, help get into that past due balance and keep you current. But in total, with this, as well as all of the agency partners, this year alone, we've been able to connect with customers with over, with approximately $4 million in assistance. And, you know, I mentioned that we have, we continue to try and find ways of what we can do now. As you know, we are working through our ERP program and trying to find ways of how do we, while we go through that, what can we afford and what can we change? So we did, in the past year, increase the ability, sorry, increase eligibility as well as create that customer assistance finder. We expanded our payment options, so you can see up there, you can, a lot of customers that preferred paying cash when it was inconvenient for them to go to different locations, so now it doesn't matter where you're at, you can pull up your bill and they can scan to help that. But also, it's about transparency and helping customers know their usage. Over the last six months, we've rolled out, or maybe it's the last year now, we rolled out a new online, or we updated our online portal, so customers can go and answer some questions specifically to their house and how they use their electricity, and then they can see when and how they're using their power. So this, these are some of the things we've done in the short term. And in the long term, as you know, we are in the process of upgrading our systems, and this will give our energy advisors more information, whether they're out in the field or taking calls over the phone, of how to help specifically to that customer. And Mayor, this is to your question, it gives us more access and able to put that data in a meaningful way for us, continues to give us an opportunity, or we're hoping, give us clarity for customers on their bills, so if they don't want to contact us, they'll have access to that information more directly. And, you know, Trustee Gonzalez, I know we're meeting with you later on about how AI can also help us and continue to try and look through all of those opportunities. So we're open to feedback, we're opening, open to connect with more customers to help get us to help reduce the number of times or the number of customers that do get disconnected. You know, the, what I would like to do is, we have a short video that we want to share, but before I do, I do have a chunk of folks that do get to interact with customers. For all of my customer folks, will you stand up? That's Oscar and Joy. And Joy is, like I said, she was a crew member, I mentioned one of her stories there, she actually moved over to the ERP program, and she's making sure that we're keeping our mind on these important issues as we design and create our requirements. So it's not just something that we're leaving to the IT folks to focus on. Evan's really done a good job of pulling us together so that we're doing it together. But these are the folks that deal with all the difficult customers, if we get them from y'all, or just difficult customer issues. They have more heart than I can say, but thank you all for being here. And can we roll the video?
We do offer.
We go above and beyond every chance we get. It's all about being there when they need us the most.
When.
I wanted to work for CPS Energy because I enjoy helping people.
CPS Energy is very caring. Customers are surprised by all of the things that we do offer.
We go above and beyond every chance we get. It's all about being there when they need us the most.
When I am done with the customer and get them that help that they really needed, it feels amazing.
Visit cpsenergy.com/assistance or call 210-353-2222 to learn more.
Thank you, and just wanted to share that video. It's going to be a part of our new customer assistance campaign that's rolling out in July. I hear them clapping over there for themselves, so very proud of them. So just so you know a little bit about the, it will increase awareness of available support and reinforce our role as caring, community-focused leaders. We will use data and zip code level targeting to guide our outreach efforts, as we continue to do. And it also allows us to make sure that we're getting the message out to the communities that do have the greatest need and do everything we can to improve the effectiveness and impact that we can have. We will make sure that this is something that goes on consistently with the ongoing efforts that we have to let customers know the assistance programs that we have year round, and it will run through our multiple paid media channels, radio, print, digital, social platforms, as much as we can to get a broad and diverse audience reach. Last year with our campaign, we were able to get eight million, I think it was in total over eight million touchpoints, impressions, so we'll continue to try and grow that and make sure that we are everywhere that our customers are. And if there is someplace that you know that we're not, we're happy to connect, to find ways to be there. You know, in closing, I just want to reiterate that for us, disconnections are just a last resort, they're not something that we start with. For us, we start with compassion and care through every phone call, through every bill, through every shaking hand, moment we get to shake hands. We want to be people's partner, and we want to find solutions that will help connect customers to prevent that disconnect. It just takes one call and we can help prevent an account from being disconnected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardwick. Your dedication is very apparent, and I am very mindful of the time, but this is important, and so we are going to go with questions. Start on this side, Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you speak a little bit to the weatherization projects or opportunities that folks may be able to apply for, and how successful folks are when they do apply for those things, and if you had recommendations on what might actually increase people's ability to qualify for those things, to the extent implementing those actually helps to bring down their bill, right, which is ultimately what we want to be helpful.
Yes, ma'am. So we do have, it's called CASA Verde, is our weatherization program that we do offer, and I do have some numbers here. As part of what we do with the weatherization, we have an amazing connection and partnership with the city where the biggest challenge that we have to be able to weatherize homes really is doing some small repairs around the house. So through the partnership with the city staff, we're able to get some financial assistance for, to get some of those small repairs done, and then what we're able to do on top of that is to go a step further and do weatherization. So sometimes it is, well, it's putting insulation in people's ceilings, it's putting, helping people know ways to save and finding ways that electricity is seeping out. And we can get you, it looks like I did not have, I do not have the numbers, but we can get you the numbers that we can share on how many homes we have weatherized. I know it's over 30,000 homes that we've been able to weatherize and continue to find ways to connect more customers with weatherization, as well as weatherization programs. So I know between the city, the county, ACOG, there's a lot of community resources that also can help whenever, if there's a limitation that we can't get to.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'd be interested in seeing how many folks are helped, I'd also be interested in understanding how many folks don't qualify for the help, and what are the reasons for that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I asked the chair if I could speak after the mayor. I did want to start by first acknowledging everybody who's come to the meetings for the last couple of months. I've stated this before and already stated, you know, I was raised with humble beginnings. I currently live in 78207, and one of the reasons why I went to self-employment was because I remember being that little girl who had to stay and go with my mom and being lines to ask for reconnection. I was part of that neighborhood where neighbors would help each other with the extension cord to make sure that food wouldn't go bad. But I was also that little girl that, there was a lot of shame in being poor, and so I know we have a lot of wonderful programs, and, you know, I think that despite this, and I don't want to use the word warm and fuzzy kind of, you know, we present all this data and how we're helping people, but there is a lot of shame sometimes that comes with being poor. And I also noticed that there's not a lot of grassroots organizations listed that are there. We've had several come meeting after meeting, and so I just want to make sure that we're mindful and that we're partnering up with more grassroots, because I know growing up, I mean, I grew up going to St. Vincent de Paul for help. I grew up going to Goodwill, I grew up going to Salvation Army. I mean, I know that I go into the church, our church would help us with programs, and so I just want to, again, be mindful that we try to maybe reach out to grassroots, very tiny grassroots organizations, because typically when you're dealing with fear, or shame, or deportation threats, things of that nature, you're going to go to a smaller organization or a member in the neighborhood. And so I also want to thank Richard who's here. I live again in 78207, and we recently, and I have a very active HOA Thompson Place neighborhood. And so sometimes we find out things even before Richard finds out things, they're pretty fast. But I do want to thank him because, again, that's another community that we've had a lot of representation here and comes from. But again, I chose self-employment because I would have been making $750,000, or while I was going to college and working two to three jobs, my husband and I were averaging $20,000 a year, raising a family of eight, and I didn't include my brothers and siblings and my mother that I started at a young age at 14, caring for her. And so I'm very responsible and physically responsible, but at the same time, understand that there's a lot of need. I will like to emphasize that CPS is not in the, other than creating jobs for the several programs and services that we have here, it's not our responsibility to focus on livable wages. I do think it is our responsibility to balance those who have means and those that don't have means and make responsible decisions. And it is, again, it was stated more than once, that it is a balancing act, and I do think that there's an opportunity to continue to improve things. With that being said, I want to ask the following questions. Number one, and I know the mayor already touched about this, and I've been in the tech, data world, I mean, we did talk already about segmenting the data by zip code, and I think that's a starting point, but are we segmenting customer data based on actual behavior, payment trends, and we have a little bit of that insight already, and are we using this data to distinguish between who needs outreach, who needs case management, and who presently is non-responsive? And I think you kind of touched about that, but I think there's a room, there's an opportunity again, to continue to dig a little bit deeper into that. And then I know that, I know RCO just mentioned, we don't really have a connection, disconnection policy, but really an account payable or receivable, if I understood correctly, policy. Are we making sure it's legally compliant? And are we also clearly executing with consistency, particularly for senior citizens and those on medical, vulnerable house, medical devices, so that no one is unfairly, and I don't want to use the word penalized, because we're not penalizing individuals, but there is a policy, no one can be free by law, at least that's what I understand. Are we making sure, again, that we're applying it consistently? And then I again want to just be clear that we're compassionate and accountability are not mutually exclusive, disconnection should never be about a first resort. However, again, we have a legal responsibility for those who, the majority who pay, we can't ignore their consistent good behavior, but at the same time, we got to make sure that we, again, remain, if possible, focused on data-driven customer segmentation, clear, again, protocols before disconnection takes place, and that we ensure community partners interview earlier and not late in the game. And again, I just want to make sure that we consider the complexity that goes into poverty and our city dynamics, and that we also find ways to use data in some form or fashion to be more granular about it so that we can get ahead of it and work more with grassroots organizations. And then I just want to, again, want to thank that, because keeping the lights on is everyone's responsibility while we balance financial health as well. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, I'm just going around the circle here. A few questions for you.
Yes, ma'am.
But I did want to just have a couple of kudos. Jesse Hernandez is amazing, love him. When I saw Joy walk in the room, I had no idea who she was, but she made me happy, just to look at her, and Oscar too, but I didn't see him walk in the room.
That's why her name's Joy, it's helpful.
Yeah, yeah. I think he took some interns on ride-alongs today.
I believe so.
Yeah, I love that idea, and they were really excited about it. And just, you know, just wanted to talk about the nonprofit community, it's something, you know, we do in my department at UTSA, and I think people are amazed when they see how dense the nonprofit community is, and I'm proud that we're working with them.
Thank you.
It's Joy again. I said something nice about you. So, okay, some questions. I did speak to Didi Bilmarz on the phone, and I wrote down some things that she wanted to discuss, and I think you've hit most of these. I think you've made it very clear that we cannot gift public funds, we are a public utility, that would be against the law. We are a public utility, that would be against the law. One of the things she had asked about, and you and I had discussed a little bit, was whether there was, and I don't mean to say it's a secret number, but a designated number that professionals who work in community service organizations can call if they encounter a client who is in particularly bad situation for a number of reasons, one of which is a disconnection. And that there is more of a direct line that they can call here to work with somebody. And so you had told me that was correct, so can you just confirm that?
Yes, we do have an agency, both the agency portal as well as an agency line that the agencies can go through. They have to go through some security requirements, and they do have to have permission to access the account. And if we have that, then we can move forward in sharing information and finding ways to help support them. So we have about 120 agency partners right now that use the portal and phone number, and happy to see, to Trustee Gonzalez's point, if there's others that we can get signed up.
All right, my microphone keeps sticking. Can you explain the reconnection fee? So if there is a disconnection and then somebody agrees to a payment plan, is there a reconnection fee or can that be waived?
So we have, we have a couple of different fees, so some people refer to them differently. In some, in most cases, well, in all cases, there is a fee to reconnect the electric as well as the gas meter, depends on if you have one or both. Some of that is based on just the amount that it costs to get that power turned back on. And so those are, those are flat fees, and we can be happy to share those. Those are also fall under our rate structure and are not something that we can waive. That being said, there is, there are times whenever customers that have struggled consistently and gotten to the point of being disconnected once or multiple times, broken payment arrangements have not reached out and found another solution with us, those customers, or just based on their payment history, we do have to take a deposit upfront. Now, if that customer has already paid a deposit in the past, we can see if we, if that deposit's still sitting on the account and we haven't been able to apply it, we will do everything, these amazing folks behind me will do everything they can to lessen that burden of what they need to reconnect. So there could be a deposit amount that we need upfront. There are a few components in our terms and conditions that allow us to waive disconnections. One is proof of prior history, consistent prior history at another utility, or if you are military.
Okay, thank you. Yesterday, I was looking around on the Assistance Finder, which is, which is really easy to find and pretty easy to use. I didn't go so far as I have to make anybody do any work, because I actually filled out an application.
I made my mom do it, and so she got signed up for a budget payment plan.
Can you address one of, what one of our speakers said earlier about a 30-minute window to fill in the forms?
I'm not sure. I think that that was her agency's limitation. We don't have, one thing that we've done away with, actually when Rudy was the Chief Customer Engagement Officer, was we no longer hold our energy advisors to a time limit. You take the time we need to help the people that need the assistance. The best thing we can do is help find all the assistance upfront to prevent having to call back multiple times. There are times, though, that we do see high wait times. As part of that, though, we have the ability, you can go online to schedule an appointment for us to call you. You can schedule an appointment in one of our five walk-in centers, or you can do the virtual hold where it holds your place in line and then calls you back whenever you, whenever the next available rep is available, or next available person is available to take your call.
Okay. My last question, and this was something DeeDee had asked me about with the critical care billing. And that's one that's really kind of chilling when you, when you look at that application, you know, and it says, you know, be aware, even if you're in this program, it doesn't mean that we will keep your power on if you have medically necessary devices. And it's frightening to read that. And I know you're limited by law, but for the people who have those medically necessary devices, can you just address that a little bit? Because to me, that's, that's the toughest one.
It absolutely is. So part of that is that there's other reasons why an account could be disconnected. Sometimes it's theft of service, sometimes it is if you're tampering with a device, other times it's just an outage, right? One of those critters that Elena was talking about gets in the lines, or a car hits a pole, or we have a storm that moves through. So in those situations, what we do is, that's, that's actually why the Community Response Unit, our crew team members, were initially, that team was created was specifically for critical care customers. So their first and primary focus is to do everything they can to connect with those customers. So just on the billing perspective alone, in that, that sequence that I showed you, they do get an additional amount of time, be happy to send that version updated. You get a certified mail, and it's not just regular mail, but it's certified mail. Many times it's a phone call or a text or an email, knock on your door, from our crew members. And if there is an unplanned outage, for whatever reason, our crew team members will go out, they'll call them to see, to let them know how long we're expecting their power to be out, and see if they do need some type of temporary solution. We have our mobile support bus units, the big bus that says CPS Energy. And many times part of that is saying, hey, we are here in your community, you can go find us at the church, the library, whatever that is. And whenever, if you need some to plug in, we can do that. Or if you can't get out of your house, we do have temporary batteries that we can, we can provide for our critical care customers. So if they, they need that electricity to survive, and it's just out of our control that we can help them. But it is one of the hardest challenges that we see.
But specifically with those customers who've been disconnected for non-payment, do they have those options of somebody coming to their house and charging the battery? I mean, I realize they can go out to a community center, but would they have that option too?
No, unfortunately, after the account's been disconnected, we don't have the ability. We're limited in what services we can provide for them as an active, as an inactive customer.
Because the number of extra days is not a whole lot.
Right.
Okay. And I know we're limited again in what we can do. Rudy, did you want to?
Well, I think we can do, I think we need, we can have an opportunity to work harder to get customers who are on life-saving equipment signed up. 3,000 customers and, you know, with a million customers out there is, you know, not enough. And so, you know, we're going to talk to, you know, our team to figure out, you know, can you work with the medical community to just raise awareness so that they have the forms and are ready and, you know, and maybe we don't have to do all the heavy lifting to get them, you know, aware of the program. So, you know, I, we, it's consistently been on our list of things to work on. I don't, I can't say it's translated into more customers getting on the program, and so we just have to keep trying.
I know, just to consider, I don't know, I know my sister, when she was a physician, she would always say, there's a victim, not a victim, a patient advocate. So that might be an avenue. I mean, I know, again, but there's always a patient advocate. Usually people who are struggling with the bills or all of a sudden have a crisis, and so that might be a starting point. That's just a suggestion.
Thank you. We have partnered with UTSA Health Services to see, one, just to understand the day in the life of customers who are low income and struggling. So we actually put all of our executives through that. So as an employee, you get to see the challenges that a customer might see, might experience, but at the same time, trying to find ways to get more folks signed up. We work with the Prometores as well as, I think it's CareNet, but to Rudy's point, this is probably one of our biggest challenges, is getting folks that are, that do have the dependency on medical equipment and electricity to sign up on our critical care program. And Dr. Amer, I think to your point, it's, it is a pretty onerous application, and there are some things that do scare you. But if we don't know who you are, then it kind of limits our ability to provide you support.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair, questions? Trustee Steve?
Yes. An onerous application, we can help, right? We can make that less onerous. So welcome, right, understanding how we can do that in quick order. And then secondly, you know, I think this is a wonderful opportunity to have a very public campaign about, hey, if you're on, you know, these six things, or I'm not sure how long the list is, but I think this is something that all of our local news providers would be more than willing, I think, to help us make sure we get the word out in the interest of best serving our community. And I'm glad to be a resource for that as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are on our last item for this meeting. Item 10, Legislative and Regulatory Policy Update with Ms. Kathy Garcia.
Good to see you here, Kathy.
Good to be here. Good afternoon. I will highlight the main takeaways for us following the 89th regular legislative session, focusing on our public policy agenda, as well as the successes in the four policy pillars that have been approved by the board last December. I'm also going to speak to our strong internal collaboration and our valuable external partnerships. I'll also outline next steps following the session's end and touch on other notable state and federal developments. But before I proceed, I'd like to acknowledge the federal and state relations team that is responsible for this line of work. Most of them are with us here today, so if I could ask them to stand real quickly. This unit is led by Carrie Meyer. She is our Director of Federal and State Relations. We also have Zanir Ali, our Federal and State Relations Manager, Ken Whalen, our Public Policy Communications Manager, and Marie Stoner, who is not able to be here today, but I'm sure she is watching. So thank you, team, appreciate you being here. So with that, I am happy to share, we had a successful session with numerous bills passing that reflect our priorities. The session saw the highest volume of bills filed in recent history, yet featured a notably lower passage rate, about 14% compared to the typical 20%. The legislature passed over 1,300 bills while over 8,000 failed to make it through the process. We identified over 500 bills that were relevant to CPS Energy and required our review by our internal analysts, as well as engagement throughout the whole legislative process. Specific to energy, legislators primarily focused on infrastructure reliability, types of generation sources they wanted to support, and how to integrate new technologies and large loads. A number of bills will now require agency rulemakings to establish detailed guidelines and procedures for implementation. So while the bills have passed, the work on these policy matters will continue. As a quick recap, these four policy pillars align with and support the utility's strategic plans, both Vision 2027 and Horizon 2050. The appendix to this deck includes a more detailed view of what is included in each pillar as presented back in December. Some general context, this session saw considerable debate surrounding power generation and renewable energy. Numerous bills were introduced seeking to alter or even hinder existing framework for renewable energy development and investment within this state. Three bills, these bills covered a range of topics, including changes to tax incentives, revisions to permitting processes, and adjustments to make structures for renewable energy sources. While these measures created much debate, they ultimately did not have sufficient support to pass. I'll also mention that we saw very little filed impacting our natural gas LDC, our local distribution company. We are a combo utility, so we look at legislation for that as well. Now, I'll quickly hone my remarks to the bills that were passed within each pillar. I'd also like to note, though, that the bills that I will mention are really where we spent most of our time during the session. It's certainly not an all-encompassing list. So a key focus for us is evaluating how a proposal could affect our customers. It is our top priority. This session, legislation was passed that highlights the state's dedication to increasing generation capacity for the benefit of customers and the entire grid. Senate Bill 1 sets forth the state's budget, and it allocates an additional $5 billion for the Texas Energy Fund. This is a program that provides grants and loans to finance the construction of certain electric facilities in Texas. House Bill 500 allocates $350 million for the development of advanced nuclear reactors. Additionally, Texas lawmakers passed several bills aimed at protecting consumers in the solar energy market. You may recall the Express News article that was published, they published an investigative series report last year which spurred this legislative action. For instance, Senate Bill 1036 requires individuals involved in residential solar sales to obtain an occupational registration, restricting unregistered individuals from engaging in these activities. Senate Bill 1697 directs the PUC to develop and regularly update a consumer-friendly guide for homeowners interested in installing rooftop solar energy systems. I'll also mention, as part of the customer affordability pillar, it's found in the appendix where there's a little bit more information about this pillar. But in hearing what we've heard today, I want to make sure you all know too, our team consistently messages to our Bexar County delegation and to the legislature as a whole, if there are additional funds to be found at the state, our customers, customers across the state still need that help as well. So we continue to drive that message home. Each session, protecting the municipally-owned utility business model, is another one of our top public policy priorities. As we have seen in the last several sessions, there were bills filed that sought to alter portions of MOU governance. However, none of those received any traction this session. The legislature did, however, pass bills to address perceived hurdles at the local level for residential customers trying to install backup energy systems. Specifically, 1202, which is listed on the screen, allows for a third-party inspection. And Senate Bill 1252 prohibits municipalities from adopting or enforcing measures to regulate the installation or inspection of backup energy systems. Now, for us being MOU systems, both bills include specific language to protect us and our ability to enforce our service policies and procedures that govern installing these devices. We sought to protect our customers, our equipment, and our employees in this process. The legislature passed various bills aimed at enhancing the reliability and resiliency of the state's energy infrastructure. These measures seek to strengthen the grid, improve the durability of transmission and distribution poles, and ensure utilities are better prepared for extreme events, including wildfires. Notable bills are listed on the screen. I will highlight House Bill 14, which establishes the Texas Advanced Nuclear Energy Office within the Office of the Governor, a bill that we did support. And the well-known and discussed Senate Bill 6 requires the PUC to set standards for interconnecting large-load customers in ERCOT. Of course, this is all attempting to balance business development with minimizing stranded infrastructure costs and making certain large loads help cover those interconnection costs. The bill contains a series of directives for the PUC and ERCOT, and therefore, a lot of the specifics are yet to be determined. The next set of bills on the screen were passed in response to the 2024 Panhandle wildfires. Basically, they all direct the PUC to accept plans from utilities. They'll be looking at those, they have the opportunity to approve, reject, or ask for amendments. And then separately from those, under current law, any transmission line project that's succeeding three miles requires what's called a CCN, or a certificate of convenience and necessity. You have to get an amendment for that, which can be lengthy and a complex process. So House Bill 3092 raises the threshold from three to five miles, which is supposed to be a regulatory improvement. The legislature took steps to also enhance the safety and security of utility employees and utility assets. Senate Bill 75 establishes the Texas Grid Security Commission. This is advisory in nature, they won't prolegate rules per se, but they will make recommendations. Senate Bill 1646 increases penalties for theft of, and damage to copper and brass, something that we experience frequently. And Senate Bill 42 changes an assault on a utility worker from a Class A misdemeanor to a third-degree felony. The protection that these two bills apply for both electric and natural gas, so both sides of our business, and we were pleased to help support that as well. The successes we had during the session were made possible by the tireless work of our internal teams, including over 70 subject matter experts and every attorney in the legal department, as well as the strong relationships we have with our external stakeholders. This slide depicts many of the actions taken to make sure information was shared, feedback was collected, and growing professionals were educated on the legislative process. Of note, we provided weekly written updates to the board, and we hope that you found those to be informative. I'd like to thank our President and CEO, Rudy Garza, for consistently engaging in this process, making himself available to policymakers that wanted to hear directly from CPS. I'd also like to thank Chair Romero and Trustee Gonzalez for their engagement in the process as well. Leadership at the Capitol matters. So next steps involve several key actions for our teams. So, next steps involve several key actions for our teams. First of all, making sure business units know what bills passed and working with the legal and compliance teams so that any new requirements are adhered to. Engaging in regulatory rulemakings that will be necessary to implement new legislation. We also plan to engage with members who introduce bills that were unfavorable to our utility and educate them so that perhaps we can prevent those bills from being filed in the next legislative session. And we will work with legislative committees during the interim as they look to develop their policy areas for the next legislative session. Just as I say next session, the Governor has announced a special session to begin on July 21st. The focus of the agenda will be on major pieces of legislation that he vetoed, claiming additional work is needed on those measures. There are currently no items applicable to CPS Energy on the agenda. However, the Governor can expand the agenda at any time. Additionally, members can file bills on any subject, but those bills are not eligible to be debated unless the subject matter is added to the agenda. So just as we participate in the legislative process, we also stay actively involved with state agencies that are working on rulemakings to implement legislation. Once upon a time, certain agencies would often pause their work while the legislature was in session, but that is no longer the case. In fact, looking at the PUC, that agency has held a steady stream of workshops and open meetings throughout every year, and yet their work in implementing prior legislative sessions' laws is far from complete. As the regulator for ERCOT, the PUC's focus has been on policy reforms to strengthen the grid and spur generation investment. There have been many changes to their rules with the current focus on generation requirements, both technical and financial. Now, the PUC has the laws from the 2025 session to calendar and implement as well. Specifically, the PUC will have to work swiftly to address the needs of large-load customers like data centers we've heard about today. As I touched on before, the Senate Bill 6 requires a lot of regulatory action to be taken by both the PUC and ERCOT. ERCOT planning and operational procedures will need to better account for these capabilities of our large customers. The bill triggers a review of cost allocation to ensure each customer pays its fair share of transmission system costs. And ERCOT's statewide planning processes will have to be updated to allow for a more optimally informed engineering plan, attempting to balance the expectations of the large-load customers with the risk of overbuilding the system. We're an active partner in the statewide planning processes and will continue to work with other utilities to address this need. While I have primarily focused on state-level activities, it's also worth mentioning activity at the federal level. And so just to offer a sampling, Congress has been hard at work on their reconciliation bill, which is a special type of budget-related legislation. While the bill is still in negotiations, existing energy tax credits are at risk. The U.S. House previously passed its version of the bill, and the Senate began voting on their version today, following a draft published from Friday that hit clean energy tax credits hard. The bill is drafted, terminates production and investment tax credits for wind and solar PV placed into service after December 2027. This is more severe than the prior draft that was released earlier this month whereby, to be eligible, you just had to have construction started. Now it needs to be in service. Additionally, tax credits for residential clean energy and energy efficiency will no longer apply to purchases made after December of this year. So regarding the domestic content bullet, I'll go ahead and just say we had some success over the weekend on that. There was a provision that was going to alter our ability to access these tax credits based on U.S.-made products, but we were able to adjust some language, so we had some success. And due to time, I'll just go ahead and skip that one. On taxes and financing, there was discussion in the U.S. House about doing away again with taxes and financing as a way to, for the federal government to generate more money for itself. There was thought of placing language in the bill to simply eliminate it. While that has not been included in the bill they're looking at, we are staying alert. We're working with our national trade associations to help make sure public utilities can continue using this financing tool, which helps keep costs down for our customers. And then another area of focus is LIHEAP. This is a federal program that helps low-income households pay for heating and cooling costs. Under the current administration, federal employees who administer this program were placed on leave, and I believe recently terminated. This halts the program entirely. Additionally, the future funding levels for the program are currently being debated. While we continue working with our trade associations to advocate for adequate funding and adequate staffing to keep this program running for the benefit of our customers who are in need, without this program, it just places additional stress on the programs we've already talked about today. Also notable at the federal level are actions being proposed or taken by the current administration. For instance, the President has outlined policies to increase coal production, streamline regulatory processes, and support the coal industry in meeting the rising electricity demand and enhancing grid stability. The President has directed various agency heads to identify any policies aimed at transitioning away from coal, and they must consider revising or rescinding those policies. I'll come back to that one in just a minute. The President has also directed several agencies to consider a rulemaking for reducing wildfire risks from the bulk power system, something that stemmed from some of the fires in and around LA. They are to do this without raising costs for customers. This could include things like vegetation management, removing hazardous fuels along transmission lines, improving some engineering, and adopting safer operational practices. Also of note, the Department of Energy has recently used its power under an emergency order to keep over 800 megawatts of natural gas generation from retiring in Pennsylvania. In the order, the Secretary of Energy, Chris Wright, declares an emergency in the region and directly ties it to the risk of a system-wide generation shortage. Also on the slide here speaks to FERC and NERC, and what I'll say here is that NERC's latest report highlights growing risks in central U.S. regions, including potential supply shortages, and ERCOT is included in that report. And earlier, just this month, reacting to the President's directive that I mentioned a minute ago, the EPA issued a proposal to repeal the greenhouse gas emission standards for all fossil fuel power plants, which were previously set to limit carbon emissions for these units. So, in light of all of this activity that I covered, and I tried to do that quickly, if it feels like a lot, it's because it is. If it feels chaotic, it's because it's all happening at once and swiftly and quickly, and some of it's aligned and some of it is not. But rest assured, we will continue to navigate the sea of these changing policies, and our strategic plans, both Vision 2027 and Horizon 2050, are going to continue to guide our work in all of these various policy arenas. So that concludes my remarks.
Oh, thank you, Kathy. Okay, comments, questions? Start with Mr. Steen.
Thank you for the presentation. And this may be something that you do in conjunction with Ms. Hardwick. There was one bill in particular, Senate Bill 38, that essentially made it easier for folks to be evicted. And so my concern in that is that if it's, if folks are, if we're seeing higher rates of people evicted, that means they may be behind as well on their utility bill, which means they may not close out there, and then it may be difficult for them to have their utilities restarted at someplace else. Not only that, but when we go to the infamous Slide 7 now, that may affect the distribution of where accounts fall there, which then ultimately, for us, affects our bond rating, right? So can you, and again, maybe that's something that you all need to do in concert, help us understand the impact of that bill on where we may see accounts payable and the status of those? Thank you.
Absolutely. We'd be welcome to, we'll certainly work on that and come back and talk to you some more about that.
Mr. Steen?
This is kind of long, but not too long. Hope that's all right. Ms. Garcia, thanks for your informative presentation and the effective work you do for CPS Energy, and you're a very valuable member of the executive team. So please put up Slide 14 entitled "Federal Regulatory Activities: Executive Branch Increases Industry Focus." And your main, could you put up slide? Yeah. And your main presentation today has consisted of 14 slides, and this is the 14th and very last one. However, to me, it's the most, perhaps the most consequential topic, and one that should be agendized for our next meeting, next board meeting, and here's why. It goes without saying that base load coal plants Spruce 1 and 2, with a combined 1,345 megawatts, are important components of our generation plan. And I'll quickly remind visitors, listeners, I'm sorry, that 560 megawatt Spruce 1 came online in 1992, and it has a technical life that at a minimum extends to 2047, that is, over 20 years from now. 785 megawatt Spruce 2 came online in 2010 and has a technical end of life that extends to 2065, that is, 40 years from now. Yet our current plan, which I've questioned from the start, is to convert the Spruce 2 coal plant to natural gas in 2027 and to completely shut down the Spruce 1 coal plant by 2028. That is, some 20 to 34 years ahead of its technical end of life. Here's the conundrum facing CPS Energy. On April 18th of this year, the President signed an executive order entitled "Reinvigorating America's Clean Coal Industry" and directing government agencies to remove barriers to coal mining and, relevant to us, remove regulations hindering coal-based power generation. Additionally, last January 20th, an executive order declared a national energy emergency, a national energy emergency, to address insufficient energy production and expedite fossil fuel projects. As one example of actions being taken under these executive orders, the current administration has invoked, and you mentioned this, Section 202(c) of the Federal Power Act. It's referenced in that second bullet point up on the screen, and it was mentioned by Elena Ball during our Risk Management Committee meeting three weeks ago, to compel coal plants like the J.H. Campbell Complex in Michigan to remain open past their planned retirement dates. The justification for these emergency actions is the need to ensure grid reliability and prevent potential weather-related electricity generation shortfalls. Relatedly, I understand that the current administration has granted a two-year exemption to six Texas coal plants from stricter requirements under the updated MATS rule, and MATS is an acronym for mercury and air-toxic standards. This exemption is intended to prevent these coal plants from being forced offline prematurely due to compliance issues. So to be thorough in our planning, how is CPS Energy reacting to the possibility that through executive orders, directives, and regulatory exemptions, the current administration is going to be actively working to prevent the early closure of Spruce 1 and perhaps even the conversion of Spruce 2? And why are we six months down the road? And my perception is that there hasn't been adequate focus on this critical issue. Again, with all due respect, Ms. Garcia, a 14-page presentation today, but only one page with merely four bullet points, was devoted to this topic. At our last meeting, Ms. Ball equated what's coming out of Washington in terms of executive orders, directives, and regulatory exemptions to the RMR, that is, reliability must-run process in Texas. And of course, this RMR construct is why CPS Energy has been involved in extending the life of the Bronig III gas plant at ERCOT's behest. I believe I heard her say that the kind of actions being taken by the current administration in Washington would not be effective in Texas because this is ERCOT's exclusive bailiwick. Now, I have the highest regard for Ms. Ball, but I respectfully question whether her view is dispositive. Does the existence of ERCOT really preclude the federal government from doing in Texas what it recently did in Michigan? It's been reported by some that the raft of pro-coal executive orders includes a plan to give the Department of Energy unprecedented authority to compel any power plant to stay open. And so I strongly suggest that more clarification is needed on this. To sum it up, in light of the change in administrations and growing skepticism about climate change ideology, and the fact that the Paris Climate Accord's goals will not be met, we need to expedite a reexamination of our future plans. CPS Energy is financially stressed. Its indebtedness has increased from $6 billion to $9 billion in just a few years, and that's an increase of 50%. And as we heard earlier, 20% of our residential customers are past due on their CPS Energy bills, and this has been the case for six years. I'm almost finished. Not just in San Antonio, but all over the country, as climate policy turns from remote grandiose promises of future carbon cuts into the very real prospect of present-day energy price hikes, ratepayers are asking whether it's worth it. Survey after survey shows that a quarter of the electric supports a rapid, just a quarter of the electric supports a rapid, and I emphasize the word "rapid," transition to renewables. A nationwide survey last fall revealed that only 47% of voters support spending even $1, and I'll repeat, $1 more each month on their electricity bills to fight climate change. Bottom line, climate policies promise burdensome costs for negligible benefits. What we're learning in San Antonio is that the benefits remain distant and nebulous while cost, and by cost, I mean our customers specifically, every two-year base rate hikes are increasingly larger in near term. And Mr. Garza, this seismic change in the federal regulatory environment is happening. Perhaps you're doing a lot of work on this that I don't know about, but from my perspective as a trustee, I don't feel like it's being timely and adequately addressed. The dynamic has changed 180 degrees from federal pressure to shut down coal plants to federal actions to keep them open. And just, shouldn't CPS Energy be taking a more proactive posture, perhaps by reaching out to federal regulators to discern their intentions regarding the Spruce coal plants? And I respectfully ask for a response from you.
Well, I think that is a perspective. I've spent more time in DC beginning of this year than I have any time in my CEO time because of these issues. We don't, you know, the President's not going to, you know, change his mind because CPS Energy's asking. We work with the American Public Power Association, Large Public Power Council, to do a lot of the work that Kathy and her team lead, helped lead us on. You know, but broadly, I would say, you know, we already have a refresh of our generation plan on the agenda for this year from a policy perspective. We're not going to make a decision, you know, in a vacuum on one set of assets, you know, just our coal assets, without looking at the whole picture. That's the beauty of the work that our community did on the generation plan, is they looked at our generation portfolio in its entirety and made some recommendations that they felt were in the best interests of our community. One of the aspects of our review is going to be what has changed from the policy level that might prevent us from doing some of the things that we suggested doing. The urgency that you allude to, you know, it's 2025. We're not shutting down Spruce next year. You know, we're working on a conversion of Spruce 2 to natural gas. It would happen in 2027, and then the shutdown would happen till 2028. But if one of the mitigations is to convert Spruce 1 potentially to natural gas as well, we believe this is probably going to be the most cost-effective mitigation, you know, to these directives, unless the board gives me direction to keep, you know, running Spruce 1 and 2 on coal.
Can I interject?
Yeah.
I think we're going long here, and we're running far afield from Kathy's presentation. We are going to look at the generation plan in an upcoming agenda. This will be part of it. I think maybe at that point, we will have more answers to the question about the dynamic between the federal executive orders and ERCOT and to a lot of other questions. So this is a big topic. I know we talk about it every time, but if we could still focus right now on questions for Kathy and her presentation.
Can I just respond briefly to? And I'm asking you most, I'm the one that asked permission, but can I do that?
Can you keep it really short?
Very short. But yeah, we're making decisions, actively making decisions about acquiring more megawatts, okay? So that's what, there's the urgency of it. We're spending more money, we're rounding up more debt, and yet it's in our plan to just shut down the 560 megawatts represented by Spruce 1. Doesn't that give you a sense of urgency?
Point taken, and we are going to have more discussion on this. Vice Chair, did you have any questions for Ms. Garcia?
No.
I did have a real quick question for you. Does... Does, does SB 6 provide a timeframe for the regulatory, I'm sorry, timeframe for the regulatory rulemaking? Is there a timeframe in SB 6, or do you have an estimate for it?
Yes, there, there are various time milestones that have been dictated over to the PUC and to ERCOT, so we can anticipate working on this for likely the next year, maybe year and a half to two years. There'll be some things they have to take on first that'll provide a little bit of clarity for us going forward as we work with our large low customers. It'll take a little bit of time for--
Okay, but should be settled before next executive session?
That would be, I think that would be--
I mean legislative session, sorry.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to thank you again for all you do, and I wanted to thank your team, Carrie, Samir, and Ken, for being so nice when we came up to the Capitol, and they are just so, all of them so well-connected and well-respected in Austin, and it was really nice to see that, and I, and I got to learn a lot up there.
Yes. I, I think this goes back to Senate Bill 6. So again, it's obviously going to reshape the market incentives and infrastructure investment, so I'm not sure if this is for you or for Elena, but which of these rulemakings could significantly affect our capital delivery timeliness or rate case posture?
Well, so I, I think when they look at how you allocate transmission costs specifically to customers that are needing this amount of infrastructure, that's really, I think, going to be something that impacts us. It'll, it'll, it's going to impact all of ERCOT. Right now, anything that falls into, as we know, transmission cost of services, those are uplifted to the whole market, so any, any transmission provider ends up paying for that. The goal here would be to take a look at those specific needs that's going to one customer and figure out a new way to calculate costs that can go to one customer. And that cost methodology or calculation still has to be determined.
And I think it'll, it won't necessarily affect, you know, our, our work this year. It will likely come at the next opportunity we'll be in front of the commission for, for a full TICOS case.
And again, I don't know if this question's for you or for Elena, so my next question is, and this goes back to federal regulatory activities. So again, ERCOT flagged in ERC's Reliability Warning, if I sort of understood correctly, G, H, G standards under possible repeal and most likely, and then natural grid resiliency. So here's my question. Can we ensure the public we're preparing locally even if federal actions create regulatory whiplash? It's a loaded question, and maybe it's not fair to ask.
I think that goes back to the conversation about, you know, we're, we're reviewing Vision 2027 to, to extend it to Vision 2030. We're, as part of that, we're also reviewing our generation plan. I think that is why that kind of work is going to be necessary going forward, to ensure we're always, you know, reconciling what we, what we, the, the environment we created the plan under versus what's changing, because it's all changing, as Kathy said earlier in the presentation, at a very rapid pace.
And the only thing I would like to ask both to the current Chair, Dr. Romero, as well as the Chair of the Oversight, Operational Oversight Committee. One for Dr. Romero, if you could please consider, I know we just had recently the Risk Management meeting, and with everything going on, and the changes at ERCOT and Senate Bill 6 implementation, I believe we should consider having another either late August or third quarter meeting, if possible, if you could consider that, just to get some more updates and insight on the PUC rulemaking and ERCOT's P, C, and modeling, and how these changes, again, could affect our resource and rate strategy. I, I think it's important, but that would be up to the Chair to consider that. Because again, my concerns again are ERCOT, state-level regulatory reform, infrastructure reliability and capital extension, and then workforce readiness and safety performance, project delays potentially due to supply chain constraints. And then I would ask of the current Chair, Mr. Steen, if he could consider these top items in the Oversight Operational Meeting. I believe that these should be top priorities or topics that should be discussed in that committee. Thank you.
I will just respond a little bit. I, you know, it's going to take a while for those regulations to come out of PUC. I, I don't think we would have much to report, but in August, we are definitely going to have a discussion of the generation plan very soon, and that's going to be in our regular board meeting, not in Risk Management. So I, I will keep all these issues on our agenda that everybody's talked about, so thank you for the suggestions on that. Any other questions for Ms. Garcia and her team, who I'm sure are happy to drive back to Austin right at rush hour?
Just to agree with what you're saying, these are important issues, but I think they ought to be discussed by the board in an open meeting--
But they are in open meeting, both the risks that I chair and then your report, your notes go to the public--
Well, the Operations Committee, Operations, we don't meet in, it's a secret--
No, but the one I chair meets in public, so that is a public discussion.
But still, we, we discuss--
I was responding about the one that I'm chairman of, so--
I still think you should prioritize them under your committee.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you.
Ms. Mieres, will you bring us into executive session, please?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, the board is going to recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, deliberations and other authorization on real property under Section 551.072, and to deliberate, vote, or take final action on competitive matters under Section 551.086. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene in open session and continue the meeting. It's 4:38 PM, we go into executive session.
Yes, ma'am. It's 5:27 PM and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that we're not part of the posted agenda. We have a quorum and all members are present.
We are ready for motion for adjournment?
No, not yet. We'll have to talk about the items that...
Yes, because I do have an item.
Action items.
Action items.
I'm sorry.
Right. Item nine, closeout, review action items from the meeting. Do you want to give us the list that you have and then trustees can add any others they think they promoted?
Yes, ma'am. I had no open action items from the prior meeting. I had eight action items from today. I have to update and redistribute the list of public speakers to the board. Action item number two, amend the minutes to show that where trustees' dean arrived in the body of the minutes. Action item three from the mayor, to create a breakout geographically of where past due accounts holders reside. Action item four, also from the mayor, was the same breakout but with any sort of demographics that we could provide on the past due accounts. Action item number five for Vice Chair Dr. Mackey was an outline of the qualifications for all of our discount programs, as well as a breakout of the discounted amounts that go for those discount programs. For number six, an action item from the mayor, and it was a breakout of the weatherization CASA Verde statistics in terms of the benefits provided under the program. Action item number seven was for the chair, and this is a rough description of what you asked for, so I apologize. But take a look on a one-year basis of a journey of a past due account holder from being subject to disconnect, whether they go to past due or out into a current account program, but to show the cycle of that account holder. And then the last one I had was from the mayor, and it was a question to look at the impacts of Senate Bill 38 on our accounts receivables and see if we can give some sort of feedback on that issue.
Okay, yeah, one more you missed.
Yes, ma'am. Sir.
No, it's been there since November, December.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Procurement policy.
The procurement policy, this board decided last meeting that we would send it through the committees?
We haven't decided, no. We put it on the agenda.
No, we did decide that it would go through the committees, and then if we needed to talk about it again, we would, but it would go through all the committees. We did decide that, and it can come back to us.
Who did we vote on this?
It wasn't a voting matter.
No, but we put it on the agenda that, remember, the mayor made the recommendation. No, this item was not brought up by this board. This item was brought up by administration. Am I right? Am I right?
The board, the...
No, no, no. Was it brought up by administration?
I don't agree with that is correct, but I cannot say this in open session.
Who brought it up by administration, by this board? I've been on here seven and a half years. Who brought that policy up on this board? I've been here seven and a half years, never missed a board meeting. Who brought that up?
It was brought up in an executive session before I was the chair.
By who?
I don't know.
I'm just going to strongly advise that the discussion of items that were covered in the executive session in an open session...
We ain't talking about the December board meeting that we voted, that the mayor voted to do what? With it?
In the December board meeting, the changes, the most recent changes to the procurement policy were approved.
Yes, sir. Dr. Mackey, we're gonna, the next board meeting, the next...
No, it wasn't approved at the December board meeting.
Yes, sir.
It was.
It was.
It was voted down.
that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We have a quorum and all members are present.
We are ready for motion for adjournment?
No, not yet. You'll have to talk about the items that...
Yes, because I do have an item.
All right, item nine, close out, review action items from the meeting. Do you want to give us the list that you have and then trustees can add any others they think they've promoted?
Yes, ma'am. I had no open action items from the prior meeting. I had eight action items from today. I have to update and redistribute the list of public speakers to the board. Action item number two, amend the minutes to show that where trustee Steen arrived in the body of the minutes. Action item three from the mayor, to create a breakout geographically of where past due accounts holders reside. Action item four, also from the mayor, was the same breakout but with any sort of demographics that we could provide on the past due accounts. Action item number five for vice chair Dr. Mackey was an outline of the qualifications for all of our discount programs as well as a breakout of the discounted amounts that go for those discount programs. For number six, an action item from the mayor, and it was a breakout of the weatherization CASA Verde statistics in terms of the benefits provided under the program. Action item number seven was for the chair, and this is a rough description of what you asked for, so I apologize, but take a look on a one-year basis of a journey of a past due account holder from being subject to disconnect, whether they go to past due or out into a current account program, but to show the cycle of that account holder. And then the last one I had was from the mayor, and it was a question to look at the impacts of Senate Bill 38 on our accounts receivables and see if we can give some sort of feedback on that issue.
Okay, yeah, one more you missed.
Yes, ma'am. Sir.
No, it's been there since November, December.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Procurement policy.
The procurement policy, this board decided last meeting that we would send it through the committees?
We haven't decided. No, we're supposed to have it on the agenda.
No, we did decide that it would go through the committees and then, and then if we needed to talk about it again, we would, but it would go through all the committees. We did decide that, and it can come back to us.
Who did we vote on this?
It wasn't a voting matter.
No, but we put it on the agenda. The member, the mayor, made the recommendation. No, this item was not brought up by this board. This item was brought up by administration. Am I right? Am I right?
The board, the...
No, no, no. Was it brought up by administration?
I don't, I don't agree with, that is correct, but I cannot say this in open session.
Who brought it up by administration, by this, by this board? I've been on here seven and a half years. Who brought that policy up on this board? I've been here seven and a half years, never missed a board meeting. Who brought that up?
It was brought up in an executive session before I was the chair.
By who?
I don't know.
I'm just going to strongly advise that the discussion of items that were covered in the executive session and open session...
We talking about the December board meeting that we voted, that the mayor voted to do what? With it?
In the December board meeting, the changes, the most recent changes to the procurement policy were approved.
Yes, sir. Dr. Mackey, we're gonna, the next board meeting, the next...
No, it wasn't approved at the, at the December board meeting.
Yes, sir.
It was.
It was voted down.
Sir.
How did it too?
It was two against everybody else.
No, it was voted down.
No, it wasn't.
No, it was approved.
It was approved, sir. Yes, sir.
Procurement policy?
Yes, sir.
For $20 million that executive team...
No, 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 sir. That issue is going to the committees. The next committee, both the audit and finance and the ops oversight, will get a presentation on the thresholds. We tabled that, that provision. We were asked to take that to the committees for a conversation, and any changes that we wanted to make to the threshold would come back to the board. That is happening at the next board meeting, at the next committee meeting, sir.
I will let you know through one of the committees, at least that I participate, we're still in review. There has been no final changes to language.
Yes, sir.
The board would have to approve any changes to the procurement policy. The committees themselves couldn't make the changes, but we agreed to push it through the committees for further discussion, so we had a consolidated recommendation on that issue to bring to the board.
Yes, and I didn't realize you were talking about the threshold issue. That, we never had a vote on that. There was a lot of objection to what was suggested to us, and we never had a vote on it.
We didn't.
No, we just, we left that item as it was in the policy. We didn't make any changes to that.
So, no change was made. We're still in the old policy, and the idea was just because it seemed like people wanted a little bit more discussion on it, we would bring it forward to the committees and then see where we were on that, that the committee chairs would...
I want to, I like the script, description of what the mayor said at that meeting.
I'll pull both the recordings and send it to you as well as the minutes.
And the only item that Citizen Patricia Major did bring in is I did request the EBOC meeting notes, and I believe it was for either May 19th or May 25th meeting when I was...
Those were sent to you by email. I'll resend them.
Can you resend? Yeah, I don't recall getting them. And then I'll have some follow-up questions. Thank you.
Can I just suggest, I'm sorry, just that, because all those items, I think almost all of those items all had to do with the accounts receivables, and instead of us just getting a whole bunch of board columns, could we just package this into a follow-up presentation to answer all of the questions that came forward here? I think that would just be a lot better, and then, then the public could see it, too.
I wanted to offer one clarification on the, on the weatherization piece. It was also to understand those, frankly, that had a need but who did not qualify for the assistance. For some reason, they were turned down. Would like to understand the reasons for why. Thank you.
So I had talked to CFO about this. Could I get put on that list? I'd like to see somebody graph our indebtedness, maybe going back 10 years.
Sir, we can present what has previously been presented to you, which is the information that is given to our credit agencies.
So you already have it?
The information that's given to, the last time you asked for this, we gave you the information that's provided to our credit agencies, so we can do that as well.
I thought, I thought you told me you didn't have that.
We, we aren't going to create a new debt tracking document for you, but we will give you what's been presented to our credit agencies.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, we all settled?
Yes, thank you.
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Okay, we are adjourned. We will now, I will now call to order at 5:36 San Antonio Energy Acquisition Public Facility Corporation meeting. Do we have, can you confirm a quorum, please, Ms. Ramirez?
Yes, ma'am. We have yourself as president, Dr. Mackey's vice president, Rudy Garza is the assistant vice president, trustee Gonzalez is here as director, Mayor Jones is here, trustee Steen as director, and Corey Kachinsky as director. All members are present. We have a quorum.
All right, Ms. Gomez, do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Okay, then we will look at the consent items, which is 3A and B, minutes of our meeting, and directors and officers insurance program approval.
So I have a question about the minutes.
Okay.
All right. So we started the meeting, I think this is right, we started the meeting, this is a January 31st meeting at 4:41, and we adjourned it at 4:41. So I'm wondering, did we, did we do all this under 60 seconds?
I agree that there is a typo either in the start time or the end time, and so it asks for approval of the minutes with my judgment of one of those times.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move approval.
This is for the entire consent agenda?
Would it be, I don't know why the DNO insurance, I know everybody's in, wants to get out of here, but why would the DNO insurance be on the consent agenda? Wouldn't, wouldn't you all be interested in that?
It's historically been put on the consent agenda, sir, with your comments consistent on the DNO insurance. No, no other trustee has had an issue to discuss regarding it.
We're not going to discuss it. If you want to pull it from consent agenda, pull it from consent agenda.
But if I pulled it from the consent agenda, then we would discuss it, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Everybody's glaring at me. Okay, let, let's just let it go.
Just hungry.
It's, I, I think it's, it, it affects us, and I think, I think there's a, it's good to look at the premium, the amount of coverage we have. I, I don't know. I could, I guess I, on my own, I could, you, you could give me a briefing on it, couldn't you? All right. I'll just do it on my own.
You're free to do it. I wasn't meaning to pressure you.
Good, I'm fine. My life, you glaring at me. It's great. Let's just discuss it. I'm fine.
You're, you're fine with what, Ms. Gonzalez?
Discussing it right now, if you like. Want to pull it and discuss it? I'm fine with that.
All right, we're gonna pull it.
There's minimal change to it, Chair, so, I mean...
Well, then it'll be fast. Rudy, can you change your motion then, so it is just for item 3B?
I move approval on item A of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We can do this by acclamation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we would like to have 3B briefly presented, please.
Good afternoon. So this is the DNO insurance item. It is our annual renewal, and the policy period is August 1st through July 31st. The policy limit did not change. It's $20 million, and that is the amount that has been there for quite a bit now. The deductible did not change. It's $100,000. The premium went up $40, $40. I mean, it's, it's insignificant. We've stayed pretty consistent, and we're, that increase is well, well below kind of the industry average. So I do think that recognizes that, you know, the, the PFC is in a wind-down position. It is winding down. The contract ends in 2027, so as the, as the activity has decreased, so has our exposure. So there has been no need to change those policy limits.
So, so that's what I was going to mention, mention. As you said, the key issue is that the PFC is winding down, and I think you mentioned that in 2024, the assets were 150 million?
I believe that's, that's correct.
If you go back to 2008, there were 700 million. So what are the assets in, in 2025?
I, I do not have that in front of me, but it is, it is decreasing as we continue to amortize that prepaid transaction.
And I think last year, we talked about the statute of limitations in six years and...
That is exactly the, the whole point about the winding down of the transactions.
Okay.
So it's a limited exposure.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval and a second of the resolution, which is in your book. We will do a roll call vote on this, Ms. Ramirez?
Vice President, Dr. Mackey? Director Steen? Mayor? Director Gonzalez? Director Kachinsky?
Yes.
Assistant Vice President Garza? Motion carries.
Thank you. And I'm sorry I did not recognize Ms. Julie Johnson when I called you up. For PFC audit results, item number four, are we, are we having a presentation? Okay. Mr. Crouch?
Sorry, did y'all hear that first part? Okay. So to get started here, the PFC audit, just for reference, was complete, and the financial statements were issued on Friday, the 27th. And so this is just to explain the results of that. First thing I want to do is say that thanks to the team or management here for helping us get through that audit. We have a great relationship with management. We have a team of people here locally in San Antonio that have worked on it, and we have continuity with that team, which makes it even, even better to get the audit done on a timely basis. This is an overview of the results. Like I just said, there's no outstanding matters because the audit was finished on Friday. I'll have the audit, auditors report here in the presentation, but just overall, it was a clean audit opinion. It was an unqualified audit opinion, which is, which is great. And then one other thing that we'll discuss later in the slides is an uncorrected misstatement, which I'll go over in brief detail, but it's the same misstatement that we've had in there the past couple of years. So this just summarizes on slide five and six, the results of our audit. Those things that need to be discussed will be discussed in the later slides. Otherwise, there were no significant findings to talk about. So real quick background on, this is an uncorrected audit misstatement, so we are required to communicate to the board anything that's over what we consider a posting threshold. And so there is one difference between what the company recorded and what government accounting standards would tell you to record, and that's included here. I'll note that it's above our posting threshold, but it is no way even close to what we would consider material to the financial statements. Again, we're just required to communicate that to, to the board. I think as, as we talked last year, this will stay in each presentation, but it will wind down over the next couple of years, so that number will just keep getting smaller and smaller. On the next three slides, this is the audit report that was included in the financial statements. Again, it was a clean opinion. The next two slides, we've included our significant accounting estimates and our significant disclosures included in the financial statements. I'm not going to go through those in detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll just note that they are consistent with last year. There's been no, no changes to those. From an independence perspective, just want to reiterate, we take independence very seriously, both from this engagement and from our whole firm's perspective. So I'll say that as of today, we do remain independent of the company. There's two items or services that we did provide this year, which are consistent with prior years. One is our accounting research online. The second one is the custom learning portal. Both of those are provided to the company free of charge. I always like to say that part, free of charge. And those two things do not impair our independence with the company. That's all I had for the presentation, but I'm happy to discuss any questions. But again, it was a very good audit, got done timely, and it was a clean audit opinion.
Can you just confirm, as I think you always do, the misstatement is, is simply because of using different methods?
Yes. Yeah, the, the company has used one method versus what GASB would tell you to use, and because it doesn't have a significant impact, we just are required to report it, and that's it.
Andy, the reason for that was that it changed halfway through the, the life of the, the PFC, correct?
That's right. It did change, and a lot of people look at it from a cost-benefit perspective. Is it really worth going through the motions to change it, or just keep it as is? And we just kept it as is.
Any other questions?
I, I've got something I want to say, if I can find it. Oh, here it is. So if you put up that slide seven, and that's the one entitled Uncorrected Audit Misstatements, and here you're noting a failure by the PFC to strictly adhere to GAAP policies. Somebody could put up slide seven, yeah. The PFC amortizes its bond premiums utilizing the redemption price method. However, GASB 62 requires, and I emphasize the word "requires," amortization of premiums and discounts to be made under the effective interest method. And this year and for a number of years, CPS Energy staff and our outside auditor have disagreed on this, but we're assured that it's okay, Mr. Crouch, because though it's more significant than de minimis, it's not considered material?
It's not even close to being considered material.
Okay, and, but I'm, I'm not, I don't want to take up any time rehashing this, but just speaking for myself and how I approach my duties and responsibilities as a director of this corporation, I don't want to be in a position where I'm glossing over something like this. We're not voting on this matter, but Ms. Ramirez, would you kindly reflect in the minutes that I don't condone this approach? Our auditor has pointed out to us that in utilizing the redemption price, redemption price method in regard to bond premium or amortization, we're out of kilter with GASB 62. I contend that the PFC should at all times be in strictly, in strict compliance with GAAP, that is generally accepted accounting principles broadly, and with GASB, that is the governmental accounting standards board 62 specifically. Again, my position is that without exception, the PFC should at all times be in strict compliance with GAAP generally and with GASB 62 particularly, and that's all I have. I'd just like for that to be in the record.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
What is the short explanation for why we have a different, different approach?
Well, the company had an approach previously. GASB changed what they think should be used. I mean, it's just the way you amortize, so the difference, it'll just eventually collide together, but there's a small difference until you get to the endpoint.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Crouch. All right, item five, close out. Do we have any action items, having Mr. Steen's comments in the minutes? I think that was, yeah.
And then I think I just noted the adjustment to the minutes for the meeting times when they were called to ordering when it was adjourned.
Yes, and including Director Steen's objection to the methodology used in the past that doesn't align with GASB or GAAP.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? I'll second. All in favor? All right, all right, thank you all.